We are recording.
Thank you very much, and welcome back. The Select Budget Committee meeting of the Seattle City Council will come into order after our one-hour recess. The time is 2:02 PM. The date is November 18, 2021. Madam Clerk, will you please call the rule?
Peterson.
Here.
Sawant. Strauss.
Present.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Herbold.
Here.
Juarez.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Morales.
Here.
Chair Mosqueta.
Present.
And Councilmember Sawant.
Present.
Nine present.
Councilmembers, thanks so much for joining us, and thank you, Councilmember Sawant, for being with us. I appreciate the opportunity to meet with you all again in our second part of Day One of Two of Considering the Amendments in front of us. Just to catch up the viewing audience, we are on Group B of our agenda. Group B, which starts with Items 160 through Items 189. Colleagues, as a reminder, Group B consists of amendments that are amendments to the balancing package. Most of these are different, slightly different options from items presented last week as part of the initial balancing package. These include some new items that I believe will generally be supported by the committee, and I'd like to provide an opportunity for central staff to describe each of the items included here in Group B. Some of these are items that, for the first time, folks will be hearing a little bit more detail about, so central staff will walk through each item. And again, colleagues, for those who are sponsors and would like to lift up elements of their amendments that are included in this possible consent package, I would encourage you to speak to those items as central staff walks through each one of the amendments included in Group B. Again, these are items on our agenda, listed Items 1 number, number 160 to number 189. The concepts will be familiar in large part because they touch on things that we've talked about over the last few weeks here, but want to make sure that you have a chance to hear about them in more detail. Colleagues, after we are done walking through all of the items in Group B, after each of the council members has had a chance to lift up and explain some of the items that the central staff will be summarizing for us, we will then have the opportunity to consider removing any item from this consent package before you vote on the consent package. Again, you will have the opportunity to remove any item if you so desire to have a single vote on it, but you do not have to remove an item in order to speak to it. So with that, are there any questions about Group B? Okay, wonderful. With that, I'm going to move to have Group B in front of us so that we can consider items. And then again, we're going to walk through each one of those items. If council members do have amendments that they'd like to offer as amendments to items in Group B, we will then have you remove that item so that you can have that specific discussion about that item. We'll consider amendments at the end, along with any additional items that would like to be removed. Okay. In order to get Group B in front of us, I move to approve Group B's consent package. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve Group B, the consent package in front of us right now, consisting of Items 160 through 189. Central staff is going to provide a brief overview of the items in Group B in a chronological order. We will have the prime sponsor speak a little bit more if they so desire to any of these items here. Once we get done with the summary and overview of the items, then council members will be welcome to ask to remove any of these items before we consider voting on it as a package. Ally, welcome back.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. Welcome back, councilmembers. As Chair Mosqueta said, we have about 30 items in Group B, and I will have my central staff colleagues briefly describe the item and what has changed, starting with my colleague Anne Gorman on the first item.
Good afternoon, Anne Gorman, Council Central Staff. This item is CSCC 2B1, and it is sponsored by Councilmember Lewis. A previous amendment proposed funding in the Human Services Department at the $3.1 million level to work with city public safety departments on a request proposal, select a community provider, and implement the provision of the referenced response. This alternative approach essentially commits funding in the Community Safety and Communications Center for response planning only, rather than for both planning and development, planning and deployment, excuse me.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis, would you like to add anything else to this summary?
No, I appreciate Anne's summary. I would just briefly say that I think this is going to be a really important investment to work towards our common goals as a council, which is to resource our 911 Response Center to stand up and deploy alternative responses for things that a lot of us agree that an alternative response could go to, to respond to our current public safety crisis. And appreciate working with Anne on this, and I don't have any other technical things to add to it, so I'll reserve some of my other comments for the discussion.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Councilmember Lewis. Let's move on to number 161. Welcome.
Hello, hi. This is Eric McConaughey under Council Central Staff. This is a slide, FAS 3B1. This would request that the Finance Administrative Services Department report on increased efficiencies in animal control patrolling. The purpose of this is to, down the line, increase and improve patrolling on leash laws and scoop laws in the parks. It's sponsored by Councilmember Herbold.
Councilmember Herbold, please go ahead.
Thank you so much. Just super briefly, I have another budget action in the earlier round that would proviso funds to be consistent with past practices that the council has taken in efforts to increase funding for the animal control to actually focus on the work enforcing the leash and scoop laws in the parks. Unfortunately, despite our efforts over two budget years, those funds are still being used to support other animal control functions. Since taking office, I've consistently heard from constituents who are concerned about better enforcement of scoop and leash laws in the parks. In 2017, the budget we worked on got funding for an additional position in funding for a vehicle. In the 2019 budget, we added another ACL position. Since these budget adds, there's been no increase in the number of ACOS patrolling parks. And there's just one team of two ACOS patrolling all of Seattle's parks. And just hoping that, since there wasn't support in the earlier round to proviso funds that we've already allocated for this purpose, to ensure that they were actually going to be used for this purpose, since there wasn't support for that in the prior budget round, I'm just hoping that a report from the Animal Filter will shine a light on this issue and allow for more conversation in next year's budget process.
Thank you, councilmember. Let's move on to 162.
Item 162 is CBA FAS 5C1. It would add $110,000 of general fund to FAS and $250,000 of general fund and a 1FTE Senior Grants and Contract Specialist to HSD for a victim compensation fund and community-based organizational support. FAS 5C1 differs slightly from FAS 5B1 in two ways. First, it adds the Senior Grants and Contract Specialist to HSD and uses some of the funding that would have gone to the community-based organizations to support that position. It also includes a little bit of additional language that asks, that asks for reporting back about the number of cases that would have been eligible for victim, excuse me, for diversion, if not for restitution requirements. It is sponsored by Councilmember Lewis and co-sponsored by Councilmembers Herbold, Morales, and Strauss.
Thanks so much, Councilmember Lewis. Please go ahead.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and Asha, thank you for queuing that up. You know, victim compensation is a foundational value of restorative justice practices. Restorative justice does not ask for anybody to go on without being made whole as a victim of crime. It seeks for holistic understanding and making victims whole as a foundational part of how we're accountable to each other. Despite those principles being core to restorative justice, the city of Seattle, to this date, has not had, in our criminal legal system, any way for victims to access some kind of support of this nature, despite investing very heavily in a significant amount of diversion programs, community courts, and other restorative ways to adjudicate criminal legal matters as alternatives to the traditional courts and surveillance and probation. This will allow us to make sure that this critical component of victims walking away feeling like they've been hurt and that an injury they've sustained has been made whole to the best ability that we can do programmatically for misdemeanors. This will close that gap in our current system. So I really look forward to this being part of the various tools that we have to have a more just city and appreciate the community stakeholder in this. Asha, appreciate your work, your diligent work on this, as well as the co-sponsors. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Lewis. And I know that you mentioned a few names from central staff. Councilmember Herbold, I do want to note, we're just trying to do a quick overview orientation, and then if there's more to add to an item that we're really excited about, I'm going to ask for those comments to be held until we summarize all of our excitement for Group B, if that's okay. I thank you very much, Councilmember Herbold. I'll put you first in the queue. Okay, let's go on to the next item.
The next item, 163 FG1C1. This is the omnibus amendment that would restore jumpstart fund expenditures to the amounts and purposes prescribed in ordinance 126393, as well as reallocating one-time funds and acknowledging 2021 carryfor to support community-led investments. We spent a fair amount of time discussing this amendment in committee, so I won't go into all of the details of all of the items that are covered in this amendment. I'm just going to highlight a few things that have changed since the last, since the last discussion. So changes in this option for this amendment include some modifications. The previous version included $4.4 million of one-time federal dollars, coronavirus local federal relief funds, Clipper funds, to be used for services paired with emergency housing vouchers in city-funded or non-city-funded buildings. For some technical reasons and for program implementation, the chair has submitted an amendment to modify that. Those services are now supported by Jump Start Funds and was increased to 7.3 million, and that was included, that's included in Amendment OH15A1. So with that, the $4.4 million of Clipper funds that were previously proposed to be used to support those services are used for other purposes. This includes $1 million to the Office of Housing for Services and Capacity Funding for nonprofit housing providers operating non-permanent supportive housing projects. Councilmember Herbold also submitted an amendment, so that piece is sponsored by both Councilmember Herbold and Councilmember Mosqueta. $308,000 to the Office of Sustainability and the Environment for a pilot prescription food program administered by a community health center specializing in the care of American Indians and Alaska natives, such as the Seattle Indian Health Board. That proposal was submitted by Councilmember Morales and included in Councilmember Mosqueta's omnibus amendment. And $435,000, excuse me, $435,000 to the Seattle Public Libraries to support repairs from vandalism that have occurred over the last couple of years. The combination of these actions allowed Chair Mosqueta, in her revised balancing package, to change some of the resources that were originally supporting the package. That includes no longer making reductions to the Seattle IT departments, and in the next item, no longer relying on a reduction to the contribution to fiscal reserves. In addition, in the final hours of putting the revised package together, central staff identified an error, which identified a very small amount of Jump Start Fund dollars that had not yet been allocated. And so in this omnibus amendment, Councilmember Mosqueta has also included Jump Start funding for a proposal submitted by Councilmember Morales that would provide $120,000 to SDOT for investments to improve the Columbia City patio.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I'm the sponsor of this one, so I'll just briefly add to what Ally noted. There's a number of items that council members had suggested that they would like to see included via some amendments. Councilmember Juarez was asking about the impact on libraries. Very excited that we were able to get that language included. Councilmember Morales, again, noting your support for the patio effort that you had asked for in your district. And also, this is in response to the conversations that we've been having with folks at the Regional Homelessness Authority. Thanks to Mark Dones and their crew for all of the work that they've done to help flag how we can make sure that these dollars are resonating with what the community partners need to see in terms of stability. Happy to have been able to work on this and apply this modification for a short-term modification so that we can address some of those concerns. And with that, I think we can go to the next one.
Okay. Item 164 is Budget Action FG6B1-2022. This action would add $400,000 general fund to Finance General for the purpose of increasing the transfer to the Revenue Stabilization Fund. The budget, as proposed, included $15 million to the Revenue Stabilization Fund. This would add $400,000, bringing the total to 15.4 million, which is $12.3 million higher than would be strictly required in the reserve policies. And so I would just note, on a purely technical basis, that the transactions and the titles are correct on this. However, the description attached to the agenda reflects to a prior deliberative draft, and that will be updated through a technical adjustment on Monday.
Thank you very much, Tom. I want to also just say thank you. We've talked about this at the top of the agenda a little bit. Colleagues, you know that we've seen a continuous economic downturn, a revenue forecast that left us with a $15 million hole that we tried to fill. And this year, like last year, we continue to try to make sure that we're aligning investments right now with our commitment to making sure that working families have support in case there is additional downturn. I'm excited that we were able to not only protect these reserves, but be able to add a small cushion back. Makes me feel like we are helping to protect working families in the situation we may find ourselves in if there's continuing variance and our economy doesn't recover as fast as we all hope it will. This will help us very much. So adding to the existing reserves there was something I'm really excited about and wanted to lift up for all of you. Okay, I think we can move to 165.
For the record, Jeff Sims, Council Central Staff. Item 165 is a statement of legislative intent, number Home 10C1. This requests a report from the King County Regional Homelessness Authority, analyzing the theory and process to integrate homeless services and how peer navigators have been incorporated into homelessness outreach. Compared to the prior version, this adds an assessment discussing the theory and process underlying the proposed system of integration that the regional authority will come up with for all homeless services as the RFP for homeless services is developed next spring and then issued and ultimately responded to by providers. All of the pieces that have been previously discussed related to peer navigation and homelessness services are all retained. It's just adding a more comprehensive assessment that covers the whole gamut of investments. This is proposed by Councilmember Mosqueta.
Thank you very much. And I should say a thank you to Councilmember Lewis, who was the original sponsor, along with Council President Gonzalez, for the request that came from the Regional Homelessness Authority. Very much excited to have been able to work with them on the language related to how we assess a more cohesive and coordinated system for serving those who are experiencing homelessness and how we begin to build up and integrate more peer navigators or outreach workers into our homeless services. I'm excited that this amendment allows for us to do two important things. Provide that system-wide needs assessment discussing the theory and process for underlying the proposed system changes, system change integration that King County Regional Homelessness Authority has been leading on, especially with their commitment to racial and social justice and how we analyze the system to address those inequities we've seen in the past. The second thing is to identify ways to incorporate the pure navigator model into additional service delivery systems, working with the Lived Experience Coalition, the King County Regional Homelessness Authority, the Advisory Committee, and service providers, along with the King County Regional Homelessness Authority Implementation Board and their community partners, to better understand and incorporate how people with lived experience with homelessness, incarceration, work in the sex industry, substance use, and other relative experiences can really help navigate and inform our city's systems as we seek to improve an individual's journey from homelessness to housing. Again, I want to thank the folks over at the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. Thanks to Mark Dones and the leadership team there for working to help identify ways that we are planning to issue a redesigned RFP for all homelessness services for contracts in the spring of 2022, and changes made to those service deliveries and the RFP being incorporated into all contracts for homeless services beginning in 2023. This is a system-wide assessment that will enable King County Regional Homelessness Authority to identify strengths in the system, areas where additional capacity is needed, and how the KC RHA will seek to advance human-centered anti-racist approach that allows more individuals to thrive. Thank you very much.
Item 166, HOM18A1. Requested HSD provide a quarterly report on activities responding to unsheltered homelessness. This continues reporting that was received by the council in this calendar year on the HOPE team, homeless outreach provider ecosystem. It's all, all the data provided is specific to the number of referrals, recommendations for referrals and placement into shelter, and similar types of activities. This is put forward by Councilmember Peterson.
Please go ahead, Councilmember Peterson. Anything to add?
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. Thank you for including it in this consent package, and thank you, Jeff Sims, for summarizing it. It's really just a renewal of a slide we had in place last year and will enable us to continue to get this type of information going forward. So I have no further comments. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Let's move to 167.
Thank you. Amy Gore, Council Central Staff. Agenda item 167 is HSD 1C1. This action would add 5.6 million to HSD for one-time appreciation pay and capacity building. It is a revised version of HSD 1B1, which is in the balancing package. It has been modified to include a proviso and to revise the narrative description. It is sponsored by Chair Mosqueta and co-sponsored by Councilmembers Herbold, Sawant, Juarez, Strauss, Lewis, and Council President Gonzalez.
Thank you very much, Amy. Colleagues, I really appreciate the broad support that all of you have provided for making sure that our human service providers received a cost of living increase. That was a few years ago. Here today, in front of us, in our balancing package, we had included a one-time appreciation allotment and increase for our frontline workers, our human service providers. This helps to make sure that HSD's negotiation with RHA and the transfer of the council's intent to use this money for human service providers really aligns with the one-time nature in which this amendment was intended. Thanks again to the CEO, Mark Dones, at the Regional Homelessness Authority, and members of the KC RHA last week for their help and really helping to flesh out additional details that needed to correspond with these dollars, so it was really clear how we wanted to make sure providers received this one-time support and having that factor into the future conversations that we will be having about provider wages. I think this is a nice item that goes hand in glove with what Councilmember Herbold described earlier, and that is the overall wage assessment that we need to do. But this is a one-time appreciation note. Thank you. Number 168.
Agenda item 168 is HSD 5C1. This action would add 5.1 million to HSD to sustain 2021 levels of food and nutrition program funding. This item is in the chair's balancing package, but has been modified to add a term-limited senior grants and contract specialist at HSD to support the new investments in the 2022 proposed budget, and it is sponsored by Councilmember Herbold.
Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you. Amy, appreciate the explanation. I don't have anything to add.
Excellent. Thank you. 169.
Agenda item 169 is HSD 8B1. This action would reduce funding for a hot meal program serving the Finney Ridge and Greenwood neighborhoods from $175,000 to $90,000 and would add that $85,000 to HSD to maintain vehicle resident outreach and parking offense mitigation. This $85,000 would be in addition to $100,000 for this purpose included in the chair's balancing package in HOM 4B1. It is sponsored by Councilmember Strauss.
Excellent. Councilmember Strauss, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Chair, for including both the vehicle outreach team and the hot meals program in your base chair's package. Having conversation, you were able, through the chair's package, we were able to maintain funding through the vehicle outreach team, and unfortunately, not the expansion. We were able to fund the hot meals program out of the Greenwood Neighborhood Center, Greenwood Senior Center, that is operated by the Finney Neighborhood Center. Speaking to the Finney Neighborhood Center, they can make do with the $80,000 to increase their hot meal program, to have a meaningful impact, because the hot meals program is not just meals, it's also a place where seniors are able to connect with other services, from dental to mental health to everything. So in speaking with Finney Neighborhood Center and the vehicle outreach team, making this change will not have an impact, a deep impact on the hot meals program and will have an incredible impact on the vehicle outreach team. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Strauss. Councilmembers, let's continue.
Item 170 is HSD 22B1. It adds $750,000 general fund and a strategic advisor 2 position to HSD for expanded prefiling diversion contracts with community-based organizations. It's sponsored by Councilmember Herbold and co-sponsored by Councilmembers Lewis and Gonzalez. It is different from the previous version, HSD 22A1, because it adds in a strategic advisor 2 position. Some of the $750,000 is intended to support this position, as well as the position that was added in FAS 5C1. That CBA had added a grants and contract specialist. And so those, these two CBAs in combination will fund two HSD positions intended to address these new scopes of work for HSD.
Wonderful. Please go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you. Again, Asha did a great job of explaining. I don't have a whole lot to add. Appreciate HSD being proactive and allowing us to ensure that they have adequate funding to support our service expansion in this area and in the previous area as well. Thank you.
Wonderful. All right. I think we're on 171. Is that right?
Item 171 is HSD 25C1. It would add $50,000 general fund to HSD to contract with an organization to survey national best practices on interrupting gun violence. It's sponsored by Councilmember Gonzalez and co-sponsored by Councilmembers Herbold, Peterson, and Lewis. It's different from the previous version, HSD 25B1, in that it adds language that would have the survey aligned with recommendations that came from the auditor's office.
Excellent. Thank you, Council President. Please go ahead.
Not much more to add there. Thank you, Asha, for the strong description there. And the big difference here is, excuse me?
Let's just make sure the IT system is muted. If we can make sure to mute our IT team. Thank you. Okay, Council President, please go ahead. Sorry about that.
Oh, no, that's okay. So the biggest difference here is that we're including some resources for the city auditor to follow through on some of the recommendations that they have, but we want to make sure that there is connectivity between that body of work and the work that's going to occur through this contract. Appreciate Councilmember Herbold bringing this change forward. And of course, it was at her request that we are making this particular change in support of the proposal that the city auditor participate in the development and evaluation of the Human Services Department's Community Safety Cohort. And so connecting these bodies of work will serve to ensure that as the city continues the work of finding responses to community safety outside of traditional law enforcement, that our numbers are all landing on the same page and highly coordinated. So this is reflective of that intent. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council President. All right. Number 172.
Item 172. Sorry, just procedurally, Councilmember Morales, did you want to speak to this one?
Sure. So I'm not sure what the correct scripting is here, but this is what...
Councilmember Morales, if you are interested in pulling this item, we can skip it for now, and then we can pull it at the end of the summary? Okay. No problem. We will note coming back to this one. Thanks. Let's go to 173.
Item 173, HSD 381. This is a new item, but it's fairly technical in nature. It adds $600,000 in FTEs to HSD for their finance team. The 2022 proposed budget included $600,000 in Finance General reserves as the city budget office worked with HSD to determine what additional staffing resources they needed on the finance team to provide additional support to ensure that the department is complying with federal grant requirements and city standards for accounting. This is a reflection of the significant growth in HSD's budget over the last few years. So this is an amendment sponsored by Chair Mosqueta in order to ensure that those positions are added and funding for the... and funding for the first part of the year is provided. And we expect either underspend or supplemental budget action in 2022 to provide the remaining funding. Now also just note that these positions have already been authorized on an emergency basis by the City Budget Director, who has the authority to, to do that under limited circumstances. And so this would make this, make those pockets permanent and moves the funding out of reserves.
Thank you very much. Ally, I will also just note that this is an item that was flagged for us after the budget was transmitted from the mayor's office. It was flagged for us by the executive and CBO as a need, and we are trying to work to accommodate that request here. So I don't have anything else to add to what Ally just noted, but making sure that we're complying with federal grants in addition to making sure that the grants that we are authorizing here in the city go to the right people is really important. Happy to include this here to make sure that there is additional capacity. Okay, let's do 174.
Item 174 is CBA HSD 50C1. That's $500,000 in one-time funding to HSD to expand behavioral health services. Compared to the previous option or version, this specifies that the program that would receive funds is the Community-Based Partnerships Program. And whereas the earlier version, which we were still working at that point to obtain specific information on certain programs, when more general and just talking about behavioral health services, this now provides the exact program. The sponsor here is Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Herbold. Anything to add to this? No worries.
Nothing to add.
Okay, no problem.
Appreciate Jeff's, Jeff's work on this to, it's just, again, a fine tuning from the version that we heard in round one.
Excellent, wonderful. Okay, thank you very much. And Councilmember Herbold has the next one. So we will keep you on the screen. Please go ahead, 175.
Item 175, HSD 51C1 adds $3.9 million general fund to HSD to maintain a pre-gressed diversion program and post-proviso. And this is similar to the previous CBA in that this is essentially the envisioned of the lead program. The prior version only added $3.5 million. This adds an additional $400,000 for a total of $3.9 million. And the Councilmember Herbold is the sponsor.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold.
Just my profound thanks to Madam Chair for her work on trying to assist the council in fulfilling its commitments in prior resolutions to work to scale up the lead program. We have received reports on what it would cost. We're not, we're not quite there yet, but we are definitely moving in the right, in the right direction. And that is, I think, due in a great part to Madam Chair's commitment to focusing on this item in this, in this particular budget. So thank you.
Very kind. Thank you very much, Councilmember Herbold, and thanks for your leadership on that. All right, let's move on to the next one, 176.
Item 176 is SLY Law 3A1. It requests that the City Attorney's Office work with HSD to plan for the transfer of community-based diversion contracts. Sponsored by Councilmember Morales. This is a new statement of legislative intent, but one that asks the City Attorney's Office to work with the Human Services Department on a plan to transition over the existing contracts that the City Attorney's Office has with community-based organizations doing the prefiling diversion work. And so rather than transferring them immediately to avoid any kind of service disruption in the current existing prefiling program, the SLY asks that HSD and Law work together to figure out how to most smoothly move these contracts over without any, as I mentioned, without any service disruption, and do that hopefully by the mid-year supplemental.
Thank you very much. Please go ahead, Councilmember.
I don't have very much to add. Asha did a fine job there. Thank you.
Excellent, wonderful. Let's keep going.
All right, this is Yolanda Ho, Council Central Staff. Onto Agenda item 177. This is OED 11A1, sponsored by Councilmember Morales. This is a new statement of legislative intent that was not previously discussed. A statement of legislative intent would request that the Office of Economic Development, Office of Housing, and the Office of Planning Community Development create a plan to coordinate their strategies for funding development projects intended to prevent community displacement, to ensure that the city's investments are strategically aligned and responsive to community needs, with a specific focus on the new $7.6 million Small Business Ownership Fund in OED. This report would be due to the Community Economic Development Committee or successor on June 3, 2022.
Wonderful, thank you. Please go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you. Colleagues, this is really just about trying to increase the intentionality with our department resources and initiatives. We do have a new initiative here in the Office of Economic Development, and it's really critical that every department really focus their work on how to serve the goals of anti-displacement. So whether we're talking about economic development or land use or housing, I want to make sure that our departments are acknowledging their role in keeping Seattle affordable for everyone and working together. So these departments have been coordinating on sort of an ad hoc basis, and this SLY is asking them to really just develop a plan for how they will coordinate their approach to funding community projects. And honestly, I just feel like they could benefit from a little bit of structure and clarifying goals together about how they will do grant applications and how they will respond to community requests for funding. So that is the intent behind this SLY.
Thank you, Councilmember. Let's continue with the next one.
Members, this is Council Central Staff, moving to item 178, SLY OH 13A001. This actually was previously HSD 23B001, same SLY. This would have OH and the Seattle Municipal Court working with the King County Regional Homelessness Authority and the Seattle Housing Authority to report on prioritizing housing vouchers for individuals involved in the criminal legal justice service or system. The only change here is replacing Office of Housing with the Human Services Department. Office of Housing seems the more appropriate agency to be working on housing vouchers since they have more involvement with those than HSD does. Otherwise, the SLY is the same. This is sponsored by Councilmember Lewis, with co-sponsors Councilmember Herbold and Councilmember Strauss.
Wonderful. Councilmember Lewis, please go ahead.
Thank you so much for scaling that up there, Tracy. I don't really have all that much to add. I mean, just to underscore that this really came out of working with Judge Gregory and Judge Shadid at the Municipal Court, who have indicated a, a long-running interest to be able to divert people directly into some kind of housing placement as an alternative to the criminal legal system. This is currently not something they have resources for or the ability to do, to their great frustration. And they see lots of people continue to cycle through their court, where housing instability is frankly the reason they're engaged in survival crime and constantly stuck in that cycle. So something like this could be a great resource to allow those judges to bring some resources to bear, to, to get folks out of the criminal legal system and out of their court and on a path to stability and to break that cycle. And I think this is a good start to look into how we can bring that around to a reality. So thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, number 179.
Correct, CBA OH 15A001. This CBA would cut $6 million of jumpstart funds in HSD for services paired with emergency housing vouchers, cut $1.3 million of jumpstart funds in OH for multifamily lending, and add $7.3 million of jumpstart funds to OH for services paired with emergency housing vouchers and for services in city-funded housing units. This is, this concept or this funding was previously included in the, the jumpstart or redistribute or, or reprioritizing or reprogramming CBA. And we just pulled it out as its own separate CBA to be really clear about that funding and where it's going. And then the amount was slightly increased to accommodate thoughts from the community about the need for services funding, both for the emergency housing vouchers, but also for the permanent supportive housing and permanent affordable housing units for homeless individuals that will be coming online in the coming months and that needed services dollars as well. Council, Councilmember Musqueta is the sponsor.
Thank you very much, Tracy. Thanks for your work on this. And colleagues, as Tracy noted, this was part of the omnibus amendment that we had considered over the last two weeks here. We did want to pull this out and make a slight tweak to the fund source per conversations with folks in the community and the Regional Homelessness Authority. We are trying to make sure that we're addressing overlapping service needs throughout this budget and making sure that there are opportunities with the turnkey rapid acquisition and permanent supportive housing projects that are online at the end of this year and beginning next year, and to support them, emergency housing vouchers that have been allocated to the Seattle Housing Authority on a very tight timeline that ends in July of 2022. So using the Office of Housing expertise and service provisions for city-funded buildings and the relationship with state and funded partners and in deep partnership with the King County Regional Homelessness Authority, we are looking forward to leveraging the Regional Homelessness Authority's connections and focus, especially on smaller service providers. This CBA will allow us to meet these related service needs in the timeline in front of us and also provides flexibility to the city to work in partnership and to contract with King County Regional Homelessness Authority on the tailored approach that they are contemplating to provide culturally informed and continuous services to, especially those who are the highest risk and most marginalized populations, to ensure that individuals housed with vouchers have the services they need. Greatly appreciate the conversations that we've had with King County Regional Homelessness Authority and the role that they are working on building to continue to create an administratively consolidated and streamlined system for contracting services with those who are experiencing homelessness and look forward to making sure that we continue to identify ongoing revenue needs in the future to continue to address this so that we can pair these emergency housing vouchers with non-city-funded units. Thank you so much.
Lish Whitson, Council Central Staff. Item 180 is a new statement of legislative intent sponsored by Councilmember Morales. They request that OPCD report on opportunities to support community investment trusts. Community investment trusts are alternative development financing tools that allow members of the community to make small dollar investments in community development projects in their neighborhoods, building wealth, and supporting community investment.
Councilmember Morales.
Thank you. Thanks so much, Lish. Yes, so the, the interesting and exciting opportunity here is that this kind of investment tool provides both an alternative source of financing for these projects, but also ensures that the profits from these development projects are returned to community. And so we did have a few proposed projects for both EDI and for the Strategic Investment Funds that indicated an interest in using this kind of a tool. And so this SLY requests that OPCD work with at least two community partners who are interested in, in using this as a funding model and report back on the opportunities that the city might have to continue to support these efforts.
Thank you. Let's go on.
Okay, next item is OSC 3B1, sponsored by Councilmember Peterson. It is a statement of legislative intent that was discussed previously as OSC 3A1. This would, this statement of legislative intent would request that the Office of Sustainability, Environment, and Parks and Recreation, Parks and Recreation, develop a plan to phase out the use of all gas-powered leaf blowers in Seattle within two years. The difference between this version and the previous version or that option was that the due date is changed from June 3 to September 2. And there is some additional language to consider impacts of the plan on worker health and safety.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Chair Musqueta, and thank you, Yolanda, for that summary. Appreciate the Chair including it in this consent package. We've had dozens of constituents send emails to us in support of this effort to phase out harmful leaf blowers. As we know, the two-stroke gasoline-fueled engines are terrible noise polluters and particulate matter polluters. And we've seen an increasing trend across the nation to restrict these machines, including a brand-new law phasing them out in the state of California. As Yolanda mentioned, this SLY adds language regarding health and safety impacts on workers who use gas-powered leaf blowers as compared to other methods of leaf removal. Unfortunately, the effectiveness of quieter and cleaner electric-powered leaf blowers has improved a lot since a previous city council considered this idea several years ago. Look forward to receiving a solid plan to implement a new policy that is friendlier to our environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson, and thank you for being amenable to adding the language about the impact on health and safety for workers. I think it will also be interesting to see. All right, let's continue on.
Item, item, item 182 is STCI 7C1. This action would add $145,000 in general fund to STCI for consultant support for a rental market study. The previous option discussed by this committee would have added $75,000 for a study and with the remainder of the funding for .5 FTE to provide policy development support to STCI's code compliance group. This option focuses, focuses the investment on the study itself to provide a broader scope for council consideration of policy options in the future. This is sponsored by Councilmember Strauss.
Thank you, Councilmember. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. This is my amendment to fund an outside consultant to conduct a study of Seattle's rental market to replace data that we used to receive from Dupre and Scott. Unfortunately, Dupre and Scott stopped producing this report. The balancing package that you created, thank you, included this work. And it split it between a study and the .5 FTE, as Kittle just mentioned, in the property owner and tenant relocation group. After speaking with stakeholders and other sponsors, we decided it would make more sense to focus the funding on the study for now so that we can ensure we receive that comprehensive data set for us to take action on in the future. Thank you to all the colleagues that worked on this. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Let's keep going.
I'm Chow with Council Central Staff. Item 183 is a new statement of legislative intent, SDOT 11A1. It would request that SDOT provide monthly reporting on the West Seattle Bridge Immediate Response Program, which is expected to reopen to traffic in mid-2022. This is a continuation of a statement of legislative intent on reporting that council approved in last year's budget. It is offered by Councilmember Herbold.
Councilmember Herbold, please go ahead.
Thank you so much. So yes, this is the latest and greatest on the West Seattle Bridge SLY. It's very similar to the request that we made last year, reporting, request that we, that the SDOT report monthly about the progress on the bridge repair, which the notice to proceed should be issued any day now. I think the main difference from the updates requested in this that mirror those from last year is that it also includes an expectation. SDOT will alert council members as soon as possible if there are any changes to the bridge schedule for the mid-2022 completion target and, and any changes to the schedule for opening up the bridge to normal traffic.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item 184 is SFD 4A1. It is a statement of legislative intent requesting that the Seattle Fire Department report on its work and costs to launch the Triage One program. This is a new amendment. It establishes dimensions and dates for SFD to provide a series of reports on its implementation of the Triage One program, including its alignment with other departments and stakeholders and with related funding commitments. This item is sponsored by Councilmember Herbold.
Excellent, Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you so much. So this SLY is issued because of some of the information that we've learned about the status of standing up the Triage One program through the budget discussions. Folks may recall that in the mid-year budget adjustment that was made in early August, we'd actually included some funding for the Triage One program out of the understanding that the funding would help them in the development of the program and with the understanding that, at that point, that launching Triage One would likely, based on the number of weeks and months it would take to complete each of the steps associated with launching this program, that we would be able to, to launch the program probably late second quarter 2022 or early third quarter 2022. We're now learning that that's not the case, despite the fact that when there was this launch earlier this year, in the spring, it really sounded like it was, or rather, in August, it sounded like the launch was something that was imminent. So what this SLY does in recognizing that the launch isn't imminent and that there are a lot of steps that the executive hasn't been able to start taking yet, it requests that the Fire Department report back to the Public Safety Committee with a series of progress reports on the launch of the program that was announced in August. Reporting dates were estimated from information received by the Fire Department on the steps needed to stand up the program with. by the Fire Department on the steps needed to stand up the program, with the report being due at the end of January. The slide also requests that the CSCC report back to council on the implementation of the protocol system funded by the council in the mid-year supplemental. The report is due at the end of June, and if councilmembers will recollect the acquisition, implementation, and training on the protocol system is a prerequisite for additional non-police responses, whether or not you're talking about Triage One or you're talking about another crisis response, whether or not it's a program outside of the city or another program from within the city. So that, that protocol system and the status of it, it's really, really important to our ongoing work here. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Let's continue.
Item 185 is CBA SMC 3A1. It provides those $88,000 of general fund in the Seattle Municipal Court for electronic home monitoring and requests reporting on its use. This is a new CBA. In the proposed budget, the mayor had added $88,000 to subsidize electronic home monitoring. This would allow defendants that were otherwise indigent and couldn't afford EHM to be able to use that in lieu of incarceration. What this CBA does is places a proviso on that funding that requires the Seattle Municipal Court to submit data on the use of EHM in the past. The data such as demographics, which offenses EHM has used on, the stage in the criminal legal system, a variety of other data points, and asks that SMC continue to report on, report that data back on a quarterly basis to the Public Safety and Human Services Committee or its successor. The sponsor is Councilmember Morales.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Morales. Please go ahead.
Thank you. I don't have a lot to add except to say that I do think it's really important for us to get a good understanding of who is using this. You know, part of the reason for funding in the first place is because if you are given the option to use electronic home monitoring rather than stay in jail, you have to pay for it. And so this is allowing folks who would not be able to pay for it to have that option so that they don't have to stay in jail, but we really want to get a clear understanding of who is using it and, and use that information down the road to make an assessment of whether this is a tool that we should continue to use or if there's some other option for keeping folks, supporting them as they're moving through this journey.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Councilmember. Moving on, 186.
Greg Doss, Council Central Staff, here to talk about a couple non-controversial slides. Item number 186 is a statement of legislative intent that is new. It is sponsored by Councilmember Herbold. The statement of legislative intent would require that SPD provide quarterly reports to the Public Safety and Human Services Committee on the department's effort to identify a potential non-sworn response for 911 call types that are identified in the National Institute for Criminal Justice Reform, or NIC Jr. report that categorized many different call types as potential call types for appropriate civilian responses. And that would be provided quarterly on April 1, July 1, and October 1.
Excellent. Thank you, Greg. Please go ahead, Councilmember.
I have too much to add. Appreciate Greg's characterization of this as non-controversial. I hope that proves to be the case when we get the report back, because I feel like there is a little bit of a mismatch on the expectations that the council has based on statements that SPD itself has said about the speed at which we can begin transferring some of these calls to, to non-sworn response. But I agree with Greg that the slide itself is not controversial. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Let's move on to the next non-controversial item.
I, I, I thank you, councilmembers. I just mean, it's good to be staffing two things in this session that are not controversial. And the next one is 187. It's a statement of legislative intent by the Chair, Councilmember Moskata, and it is a new statement of legislative intent that would require SPD to report on a specific activity of officers that serves on, serve on a number of inter-jurisdictional task forces. Officers regularly serve on inter-jurisdictional task forces with the various departments of the federal government. And this particular slide would ask for more detail on what they do as part of those inter-jurisdictional task forces. The officers also typically receive reimbursement for participation on those task forces, and this particular slide would have a statement of intent that would say that council would, would like to find out more about these task force and would seek community input on the activities of these task forces before determining whether to provide ongoing reimbursement for the activities. And again, by Councilwoman Moskata.
Thank you very much, Greg. And for as long as I've been on council, I know that there's been council colleagues who've been trying to get a better understanding of the role that our city officials have on these various task force. Thank you to Councilmember Herbold, Council President Gonzalez, and others who have been raising questions just about how we are, how, what activities SPD is performing under these programs and the task force and these various task forces. So this slide is intended to really gain greater clarity before, before we receive those requests. Thank you so much.
Item 188 is SPR 10C1. It is sponsored by Councilmember Strauss. It would add $1 million in REACH 1 to Seattle Parks and Recreation for park remediation work at the $900,000 level and planning for a new dog park at the $100,000 level. This revised amendment adds a total of $1 million in REACH to SPR. As I said, the larger increment would fund park remediation work, and $100,000 will provide initial funding for a new dog park in Ballard's Leary Triangle area. Previous, previous option committed the entire $1 million to park remediation work.
Thank you very much. Let's talk parks and dogs. Councilmember Strauss.
Thank you, Chair Moskata, and thank you. And I may have inadvertently made a mistake as we have been moving quickly in this budget process. When the Dog Park Amendment did not pass, did not make it in the budget's balancing package, and I understand all of the things that you are weighing, we did still want to make sure that there was remediation and/or planning improvement dollars available for the Leary Triangle. Leary Triangle is an interesting piece of property that is owned by SDOT because it's in our right-of-way, however, functions as a park-like setting. And so my worry here is that the remediation dollars would not be able to be used at this location because it is not a park. It is technically SDOT, and so I wanted to just make sure that we had dollars to be able to spend to continue moving the community's efforts forward. The community has been working to make capital improvements to this area, including closing Ninth Avenue Northwest to make that more of a public space. They've been working on this for six years. Dog Park seems to be their large, their, what they are rallying around. I think there's other options also to include a food truck corral and possibly a skate spot. A lot of options on the table. This $100,000 would just keep that there. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. And the last item in this Group B package.
Item 189, SPR 12B1, also sponsored by Councilmember Strauss. This would request that Seattle Parks and Recreation report on the potential expansion of the Seattle Conservation Corps. Previous option of this amendment provided a position and funding to help grow the Seattle Conservation Corps. This item is a statement of legislative intent requesting that SPR provide a report on that program. It lists several specific reporting dimensions, asking for information about the current state of the program and its potential future opportunities if additional funding were available.
Excellent. Councilmember Strauss.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ann. Very well said. Previous iteration of this request was to add staff and request the report. This iteration is just requesting the report. We know that the Seattle Conservation Corps is a proven program that Seattle operates that meets people leaving homelessness or incarceration, gives them the job case management that they need to find a permanent job and, and find success in life. This Seattle Conservation Corps gives people a paycheck, gives them meaningful work and the support that they need to be successful. So I do want to expand it. I wanted to double the program this year. They weren't ready for it, so I'm asking for a report to structure the next year's worth of work to be able to get us to a place of expansion. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Strauss. And colleagues, I think that that reaches the end of Group B. I want to thank Central Staff for walking through that, and I see Councilmember Herbold with the first comment to provide general comments on our package. I do think Councilmember Herbold.
Good question. I'm sorry.
Yeah, please. Just in terms of process, I would let you know, we are going to remove, ask colleagues to remove items that they'd like to see from Group B first. We will put those to the side. We will then have a conversation about the entire package as amended, Group B as amended. We will consider Group B as amended, and then we will go into those individual ones that have been pulled. Please go ahead, Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you. I have a question. I'm not speaking about the overall Group B right now. I, I should have asked the question when it came, when we were on 187, but this was a, a new item for me and I hadn't seen it. How does this affect the current, for, for 2021, for this year, the grant authorization legislation for SPD that would provide reimbursement for some grant activities that have already occurred? And some of those activities, I believe, we are, we act as a pass-through agency. So other jurisdictions that we're in partnership with might be waiting on us for funds. And I also want to just flag that the report date is February 2021, so that further added to my confusion.
Thank you so much. Let me just ask a question procedurally. I am happy to have questions answered and addressed before a councilmember makes a decision to remove an item. Procedurally, I wanted to confirm with the clerk, I am allowed to ask, have councilmembers ask questions, and then if they decide they would like to remove it, then we can make those decisions. But as part of our consideration, Group B, that's permitted here. Is that correct?
Correct. It's at the chair's discretion.
Okay, let's do this. We have some questions on the table here, and I'm hoping that Greg Doss can help answer that question. And if, if we need to make a verbal amendment to that date, then we may want to pull this one out anyways. Council Central Staff, is there any additional feedback that you have on Councilmember Herbold's question about the impact on grant recipients who we serve as a pass-through for?
Sure. Happy to provide some context there. First, as to the reporting date, of course, it should be 2022. Staff, I checked the wrong box in the system, and I've already corrected that in the system. I don't know as to whether or not that needs to be corrected officially with a verbal amendment. I, I would ask Ally to speak to that when I'm done here. But as far as the year-end supplemental and the acceptance of grants and task forces for SPD, the year-end supplemental contains about $500,000 worth of task force reimbursements for SPD for the year 2021, for this year. And what is happening there is SPD has put in for reimbursement for money that it has already received from the federal government for the task force that it has worked on. So it is the case that if the council does not provide the appropriation authority for the, the activities and the work that SPD has already done, then it's, SPD is in the hole for, for the work that, that they've done and that they've charged to the federal government and, and are looking for reimbursement for. So this particular slide is designed to tell the department that next year, before they start charging funding, start, start, start charging money to the feds and just assuming that they're going to get reimbursement from the council, they should come to the council first and describe what they're doing. But in terms of this year, the, all of the reimbursement funds are provided for in the mid-year supplemental, knowing that if they weren't, it would just mean a $500,000 hole to SPD's budget for 2021. In terms of the grant funding, all of the grant funding for all of the major grants, all the federal grants, whether it be Internet Crimes Against Children, or whether it be the UWASI grants or the Homeland Security Grants, all of the grants are accepted in the mid-year supplemental. They are all appropriated with the exception of one $3.2 million UWASI grant. That is the grant that allows the department to spend federal funding on equipment of its choice. And that is the grant that last year, the council wanted to see the specific equipment list for, for the grant and how the department was going to spend its money. So this year, working through the chair and with the Public Safety Chair, the other grants, all of the other grants are included in the mid-year supplemental, except for that one $3.2 million UWASI grant, which will not be included and will be pulled out and can be handled separately at the beginning of next year. Since it is a multi-year grant, and what I mean by multi-year is it runs on the federal fiscal year, so it goes from October to October, so it's multi-year for us here at the city. It can be appropriated in, in, in January, and the department can spend money in 2022. And so that's the approach that, that's being taken with the grants and the task forces.
I'll have a question, Council.
Yeah, thank, I just wanted to thank Greg for that. That is, that tracks with my understanding of previous conversations that we've had with just one, I want to just, again, I want to just really make sure I'm tracking this. You, I, I thought I heard you say that the grant acceptance ordinances had already moved forward with the mid-year supplemental. Did, did you mean the third-quarter supplemental? We didn't, I don't think we acted on the grant acceptance ordinance in the mid-year supplemental in August.
And here's Ally.
Councilmember Herbold, the year-end, so we don't do a third quarter, moving away. Yep. The year-end supplemental grant acceptance ordinance and the year-end supplemental budget ordinances in Group A. So you've already acted on that.
Aha. All right. Perfect. Thank you so much.
And then I would just note, too, in terms of the due date for the statement of legislative intent, if it's incorrect in that, the version posted on the agenda, you could make a verbal amendment because the committee structure will change. In, you know, February or March, the council will adopt a resolution for the statements of legislative intent, and we will adjust committee assignments if the committee structure changes in 2022, as well as adjust due dates after talking with the executive about what's possible. So it's not technically necessary to make, to make the correction, but that really is up to the, the sponsor and the, the committee.
I, I also appreciate all the work that you've done. No, no problem with how fast things are moving. I would just want to double-check, Ally, if in the technical fixes that you all are doing prior to Monday's vote, if that's also an item that could be fixed in the technical fixes.
Yes, we can make that correction. And what that will mean is on Monday morning, we'll be asking the committee to rescind this amendment and adopt a new version that corrects the, the, the due date. So yes, we can add that to the list of technical corrections.
Okay. Well, we will consider that before we decide whether or not to remove various items. It might be cleaner to do today. I'm happy to consider that with you all. Councilmember Morales and Councilmember Strauss, hands. Councilmember Morales?
I'm just seeing if this is the time to remove an item that I need to amend.
That would be welcomed.
Okey-dokey. I move to amend HSD 28A001.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Morales, moving 28A001. As a reminder, this does not need a second. Councilmember Morales confirming that is item 172. Is that correct?
That's right. Thank you.
Okay. Number 172 has been removed. Is there any additional items, Councilmember Morales, that you would like to remove?
No.
Okay, wonderful. We will come back to folks to talk more broadly about anything else they'd like to highlight in Group B here in a moment. Councilmember Strauss, any questions or items that you'd like to see removed?
Thank you, Chair. I am just speaking to item, making sure I have this, 188 SPR 10C01, the Dog Park in which I was just speaking about. I'm wondering, do we need to make changes in, in the budget language to allow for remediation of the Leary Triangle that could include a Dog Park, but not limited to?
I defer to Central Staff on whether or not we need to offer a verbal amendment on that.
Councilmember Strauss, Chair Moskata, I would defer to my colleague, Ann. I, I am not in the, deep in the details on what this means, but that sounds like a slightly different proposal than what this is. And so, yes, if that's what you intend, is just to have a million dollars for park remediation work that could include improvements. And so, yes, if that's what you intend is just to have a million dollars for park remediation work that could include improvements of Leary Triangle, that is different than what this action is.
Ally, may I just jump in? It's the second half of the sentence, planning for a new dog park, after and it could be remediation or planning for a new dog park. I think there was just a technical, during the drafting, there was a technical mistake.
Councilmember Strauss, I'm going to suggest that we do go ahead and remove item 188. And perhaps as we consider these other items that have been removed, if you want to work on a verbal amendment to that with central staff, I think that would probably be the cleanest way. So is that, would you like to make a motion to remove item 188?
Yep, would like to remove item 188.
Okay, item 188, CBA SPR 010C00 has been removed. Councilmember Herbold, I just want to ask you a moment and a question here in real time. Do you have a preference of whether or not we do a technical amendment over the weekend? Or would you like us to go ahead and remove the item 187 for a verbal amendment to strike 2001 and replace it with 2002? 22. Council members, Council Central Staff, Greg Doss, please go ahead.
I have to admit, I made the same mistake with your amendment, Councilwoman Mosketa.
Tell me, tell me more about that, Council Central Staff.
Instead of checking the 2022 box, I checked the 2021 box.
That's okay. Is that item number 187?
Yeah, it's the one that directly follows it. So if you're going to do a verbal amendment, you're going to need to do it on both of them. Or as Ally said, you could just let us correct it in the, in the resolution next January. And I apologize.
No problem. That's, goodness, there's so many different moving amendments. That is not a problem. Ally, do you have a preference? We just want to make your lives easier. So what's cleanest for central staff?
Cleanest for central staff would either to be make a verbal amendment or just to hold it to the resolution in the spring and not have to bring it back on Monday. So if you'd like it to be clean as voting out of the budget, I would suggest you remove it, and I can talk you through a verbal amendment to make that correction.
All right, colleagues, let's just go ahead and do a poll to make it clean. And just confirming, we would need to do that to items 187. Is that also true of item 186?
Yes, it's both the SPD ones.
Okay. Colleagues, I will go ahead and remove items 187 and 186 so that we can make a verbal amendment just to the date change. Okay, so my notes say that we are removing items 172, 188, 187, and 186. All right. Councilmember Strauss, please go ahead.
Chair, my apologies. I think if possible, we'll just leave 188 as in the, we'll just keep moving forward and see what happens.
Okay, I'm going to wing this. Hearing no objection, we're going to continue to maintain item 188 in the consent package in front of us. Hearing no objection, 188 is still maintained. So items 172, 187, and 186 have been removed. Any final changes on that? Okay. Thank you very much, colleagues. Is there any additional discussion on Group B before we consider those individual amendments? Hearing no additional discussion, thank you all for your work. This is really great additions that we've been able to include in a consent package for your consideration. I think they will have meaningful impacts, impacts in the community for livability and resilience. Thank you so much. We're going to now vote on Group B, the consent package as amended. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Group B, Consent Package as Amended, removing items 172, 186, and 187? Please call the roll.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sawant? Councilmember Sawant? Strauss?
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Hi.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Chair Mosketa?
Hi.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries, and Group B Consent Package as Amended is approved. We will now move on to items for individual consideration, starting with amendment number 172. Councilmember Morales, would you like to initiate this process?
Yes, I move to amend Council Bill CBA HSD 28A01.
Councilmember Morales, let's go ahead and move to approve the council bill first, and then we will amend.
Yes, I move to approve HSD 28A01.
Okay, wonderful. It's been moved in second. And Councilmember Morales, you are recognized to consider your amendment to address this item.
Thank you. So colleagues, with apologies and thanks to Councilmember Herbold, I realize that the positions that we just added in her amendment before need to, the funding for that needs to come out of this proviso. So the original amendment would have provisoed all $750,000 for contracts with community-based organizations. And what we have realized is that some of that funding does need to go to the staffing that we just added. So I'm amending, I'm moving to amend the title as follows. Proviso $585,000 in general fund in HSD for pre-filing diversion contracts with community-based organizations, and amend the budget description and transactions to reflect the changed amount of funds on which the proviso is imposed.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Morales. Are there any comments or questions on the amendment in front of us to HSD 028A001? Agenda item 172. Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? On the amendment as described, excuse me, what was that?
I don't think we got a second on my motion to amend.
Councilmember Herbold seconded you. And then one in the description. Yeah, I know you're good. Thank you for double checking. It takes the team here. Council colleagues, any additional comments or questions on the amendment as described by Councilmember Morales? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on the adoption of the amendment as described by Councilmember Morales?
Peterson?
Yes.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Chair Mosketa?
Hi.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you very much. The motion carries, and the amendment has been adopted. Is there any additional comments or questions on HSD 028A001 as amended? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on the adoption of HSD 028A001 as amended?
Peterson?
Yes.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Chair Mosketa?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Colleagues, we do have two minor amendments to numbers 186 and 187, simply to change the date from 2021 to 2022. I will try my best to wing it here. Colleagues, I move approval of HSD, excuse me, I move approval of SPD 017A001. Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you. It's been moved in seconded. Councilmember Herbold, would you like to make the motion for the verbal amendment?
Ah, look at you putting me on the spot. I move to, let's see, amend SPD 0180A00 with a new date of February 2022.
Thank you. And I think you meant SPD 017A001, because we will do the next one here in a second, unless. Okay, so SPD 017A001 has been moving to strike 2021 and replace it with 2022. Is there any additional comments or questions? Central staff, do you have anything? Okay. Hearing none, all of those in favor of the verbal amendment to change the date to 2022. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on that?
Peterson?
Yes.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Chair Mosketa?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could you please call, are there any additional comments and question on the amendment as, as amended? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on the adoption of SPD 017A001 as amended?
Peterson?
Yes.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Chair Mosketa?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, we will now take on number 187. This is SPD 018A001. I move to consider approval of CBA SPD 018A001. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in seconded. I would like to strike, I would like to offer a verbal amendment to strike the date 2021 and replace it with 2022. Thank you very much. It's been moved in second. Is there any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, let's go ahead. Madam Clerk, can please call the roll on the amendment to SPD 018A001?
Peterson?
Yes.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Chair Mosketa?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Could you please, the amendment carries, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on the adoption of the amendment as amended?
Peterson?
Yes.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Chair Mosketa?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
All right, the motion carries, and item 187 has been amended. And I believe that gets us through all of our amendments in Group B. Is there any additional comments or questions? Okay, colleagues, thank you so much. Let's move on to Group C. Madam Clerk, I don't believe we need to read in any items into the record. Shall we just transition? Is that correct? Okay. Again, Group C colleagues, it consists of items that are standalone proposals that do not impact items that we just took a vote on. We will consider each of these items as standalone votes. We will have the chance for the central staff to present the item, for us to be able to walk through the item with the prime sponsor speaking to it. Then we can have questions, discussion, and debate, and then we will consider each item and vote on it before moving to the next one. Appreciate all of the work that you have done, colleagues, so far, trying to stay true to my initial comments this morning about keeping some of the Seattle Police Department items connected together. If there is no objection, to be consistent with my earlier comments that we try to keep related items together so that there's a cohesive policy conversation, I would like to amend the agenda in front of us to move two items from Group C to be included in Group D. This would include the agenda item number 192, that's CBA FG 901A001. I am the prime sponsor of that. To move that to the top of the list for Group D to be heard before item 201, because it will have an impact potentially on the other two coming. And then I move to move item 199, that's CBA SPD 012A001, to be heard in Group D after item 203, as it is related policy-wise, but does not have an impact on the same revenue stream. Hearing no objections, the agenda is amended. All right, colleagues, we are now into Group C as amended here, which means we'll be starting with item 191. Madam Clerk, thank you for helping to keep us on track here. Do you interrupt me if I have any need for corrections on the procedural here? And I want to thank central staff for all the work you've done. Let's start off with item 191. Excuse me, 190.
Item 190 is CBA Arts 5A1. It would add $1,125,000 of coronavirus local fiscal recovery, recovery funds to arts for the Cultural Space Agency Public Development Authority Land Acquisition Fund, and cut the same amount of Clifford funds from HSD for the Salvation Army Enhanced Shelter Project. The, just note on the, the, for funding that's being cut, it was provided in the 22, 2022 proposed budget to operate the Salvation Army's enhanced shelter in the Soto neighborhood. The proposed budget had provided $2 million for capital renovation costs, $5 million for operations in 2022, and $5 million in operations for 2023. This action would require the shelter to cease operations before the end of 2023 if an alternative source of funds for this purpose is not identified. And this is sponsored by Councilmember Morales.
Councilmember Morales, I'm going to turn to you to move consideration of the amendment first, and then we will speak to it. Councilmember Morales, you are on mute.
Thank you. I move amendment, item number 90, Arts 5A1.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Councilmember Morales, I will offer you a courtesy second, as I did earlier today, to make sure that we can have a process of discussion. It is seconded. Please go ahead, Councilmember Morales.
I appreciate that. So colleagues, I have spoken about the Cultural Space Agency Preservation Development Authority in the past. As you know, we chartered this in 2020 to develop and steward long-term affordable commercial space for arts and culture. This work came out of years of deep community work to maintain the city's vibrant arts and culture and arts industry. This CBA would provide initial funding to the PDA for land acquisition and development of long-term affordable cultural commercial space. Two projects have been identified for the initial investment. One is site development to create a new home for legacy cultural institutions, Northwest Tap Connection and Union Cultural Center in Rainier Beach. And the other would be seismic upgrades and accessibility work for the Columbia City Theater to secure an arts anchor and create a home for youth training in creative industries in partnership with Rainier Avenue Radio. This is, we've been talking about the need for acquisition funds all year. We had a number of applicants for the Strategic Investment Fund requesting application, requesting acquisition. And though we chartered the PDA, there was no initial funding provided to the organization for acquisition for capital projects. So that's what we are trying to amend here. As Asha mentioned, this would use out-year funding for the Salvation Army. And we are trying to keep with the intent of the chair to make sure that we're shifting out-year funding to things that are needed in 2022. So by right sizing this proposal, we can dedicate 1.1 million Clifford funds to this PDA and continue to provide resources for the shelter through the beginning of 2023.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments or questions? Yes, please go ahead, Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you. I appreciate the effort to focus funds that we have now that could be used in 2023 because Clifford, as a fund source, permits it to try and focus the use of those resources on our needs now. But I, I feel like that goal that we have of using funds for needs now are, that goal is really related to, for me at least, to funding needs associated with either COVID or with, like, just, you know, human needs that are going lacking right now. I'm, you know, really excited about the Cultural Space Agency PDA. Worked on it myself when I was committee chair of the Committee with Oversight of Arts. I'm just really concerned with this item and the other two items that would cut the entire 5 million Clifford funds for 2023 Soto shelter operations. I appreciate the Chair has made commitments that if there isn't another source of funds for 2023, that she would work to find those funds. Given what we know about, one, the fact that there are unlikely to be future federal funds, and two, that we may be looking at some tough budget years starting next year or continuing next year, I just wouldn't want to take an action that assumes that we're going to be able to find another $5 million for the needs of the Soto Salvation Army shelter.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbald. I will also add some comments along the similar vein. Councilmember Morales, I want to thank you for the work that you've done in this effort. And you and the Vice Chair who just spoke, very much working to make sure that there was investments in arts and culture in our earlier Seattle Rescue Plan that Council President Gonzalez and I had the privilege of prime sponsoring earlier this year. So I want to thank you for that work. I also will have to unfortunately note that among the various priorities that we're considering right now, making sure that folks have stable shelter, even in 2023, when we're hoping that we're going to be in better years, is still a big priority here. I would love to see a PDA to support arts and culture, and I look forward to additional conversations for how to secure revenue to accomplish that. But for today, unfortunately, I will be a no as well. Love the concept, but I think it's just a matter of these tough choices. Council members, any additional comments before Councilmember Morales wraps this up? Okay, hearing none. Councilmember Morales, any additional comments?
I appreciate the conversation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Morales. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on consideration of amendment number 190?
Peterson?
No.
Sawant?
No.
Strauss?
No.
Gonzalez?
No.
Herbald?
No.
Juarez?
No.
Lewis?
No.
Morales?
Yes.
Shermos Keta?
No.
One in favor, eight opposed.
Thank you very much. The motion fails and the amendment is not adopted. Let's move on to item 191. Councilmember Herbald, would you like to move the item so that we can consider it and then consider any additional walk-ons?
Thank you so much. I move council budget actions 512A 001. Is there a second?
Is there a second? One more? Councilmember Herbald, I will offer you a courtesy second.
Thank you.
Please go ahead.
Appreciate that. So I'm probably going to need a courtesy second on the amendment too before we can discuss the substance. I move to amend CBA 512A 001 to amend the title of CBO 512A 001.
Second. Very much. It's been moved and seconded. Did I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded. And Councilmember Herbald, please go ahead and speak to your walk-on.
So I'm first going to speak to the amendment, if we could. We could vote on the amendment and then do the substance. Is that right?
Yeah, Councilmember Herbald, you're welcome to speak to the concept as well, because the underlying bill is in front of us and the amendment is also there. So wherever you'd like to start.
Okay, well, as it relates specifically to the amendment, it's... There's a need to correct the recital, which refers to a $61.6 million decrease in revenue for 2022. That should actually read a $61.6 million increase in general fund revenue in 2022.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that correction. We will consider that technical correction in front of us right now. Council colleagues, are there any additional questions on this technical correction that Councilmember Herbald has described in her walk-on amendment to the recital? Hearing that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the amendment to the amendment as described by Councilmember Herbald?
Peterson?
Yes.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Herbald?
Yes.
Juarez?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Shermos Keta?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you very much. The motion to amend the amendment has passed. Councilmember Herbald, the amended amendment is now in front of us. Would you like to speak to the underlying concept?
Very much. Thank you. So this amendment is just related... It's not related to the funding piece associated with hiring bonuses. It is only related to the emergency order that the mayor has issued. And what this item does, it amends the mayor's executive order regarding bonuses for both police officers and 911 dispatch hires. It amends the order on these hiring incentives, one, to limit the duration of the emergency order through the end of 2021. So allowing the emergency order to continue as drafted and issued by the mayor through the end of 2021. It does limit expenditures pursuant to the order to $500,000. This is the amount that the mayor's office estimates would be needed in 2021. And so the concept being that in the Chair's balancing package, Councilmember Mosketa has sponsored a request for a report from the City Budget Office to the council on a potential citywide hiring incentive for city workers in recognition of what I think you've heard me say many, many, many times is that we have a lot of vacancies in a lot of departments throughout the city and some real challenges in several departments in filling those vacancies. And so this proposal allows for hiring bonuses to continue through the end of the year for both SPD and 911 dispatchers, but holds the continuation of the executive order in 2022 pending this report as referenced in the Chair's balancing package item, agenda item number eight. Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Shermos Keta. Want to thank Public Safety Chair for bringing this modification of the mayor's emergency order forward. Want to thank Council President who got the ball rolling and central staff to do some analysis of that emergency order. I think that these proposed modifications are reasonable and fiscally prudent. Considering the fact that 300 officers have left the police department already, I do support some form of hiring incentives, such as those originally proposed in the mayor's budget for 2022. There are a couple of amendments in Group D on our Budget Committee agenda which could retain some of those more modest hiring incentives. So I would need to see what happens with those before I act on this. I'll be ready to vote on this on Monday. I'm leaning toward it for sure, but I'll just be abstaining in this vote until I know what happens to the other hiring incentives. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Yes.
Councilmember Strauss? Oh, excuse me. Did I hear somebody else as well? Councilmember Strauss, please. Okay, Councilmember Juarez, you'll go after Councilmember Strauss.
Oh, Councilmember Juarez can go first.
Oh, thank you. You're respecting your elders. Thank you. Yes, I am going to take the same tack as Councilmember Peterson. I'm concerned about or have some comments in what's going to happen with when we're looking at numbers 201 and 202 for the modification, for the how it affects item number 191 on the modification of the mayor's civil emergency order that was issued on October 29, which I think that means that it's been in effect for about 18 days. And also, I don't have any information, maybe you do if you have some to share, Councilmember Herbald, of what in fact has... We don't know. I don't know the update or the status about how that's been implemented as far as the incentives and hiring in the last 18 days. I don't have any information.
That's precisely why this action allows it to stay in place, because it's working. And, you know, as it relates specifically to CSDC, they have seen three times as many applicants since it was announced. And so this action leaves the emergency order in place through the end of the year. But it assumes that we might want to make some changes for 2022.
Okay, well, thank you for that quick reply, but I will still abstain. Thank you.
Thank you both. Councilmember Sawant, please go ahead. Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry, Councilmember Sawant. I did have Councilmember Strauss in the queue. I will come to you in just a moment. Please go ahead, Councilmember Strauss.
Thank you, Shermos Keta. My comments are going to be very similar. I'm interested to see how we vote on the remaining questions about hiring incentives. I do think that Councilmember Herbald has done smart work here to leave it up to the next administration to understand if they want to put forward an executive order, because they would have the ability to do so on day one as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sawant, please go ahead.
Thank you, Shermos Keta. I will be voting no on this budget amendment, but first I just wanted to apologize to members of the public for missing the morning section of today's budget committee meeting. I am unfortunately on the third day of a three-day migraine and now also have the flu. And so I needed to go to urgent care this morning, and I also will not be able to speak extensively to explain my votes than I normally would until I get a little more healthy. But I wanted to let members of the public know if they want more information about my votes, they should feel free to contact my staff. I will be voting no on this item because it is a resolution that essentially approves the mayor's emergency order from October to create hiring bonuses for police officers. I have on Monday's City Council agenda a resolution that I introduced two weeks ago that will do the opposite. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments or questions?
Get better, Councilmember Sawant.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Sawant, for dialing in. I do hope you feel better as well. Okay, Councilmember Herbald, you do have the last word. Please go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I just... I appreciate hearing from councilmembers who are planning on abstaining. I just want to again emphasize that whilst we do have some pending discussions around the funding for incentive program, this is a standalone action that is completely separate from that conversation. This is only about the extension or the amendment of the existing executive, emergency executive order. And as we heard from Councilmember Sawant, she has another version on Monday that we'll be considering. And as she characterizes the competing amendment, I would like to settle the question for once and for all here within the budget deliberations on how it is we are going to either accept, amend, or reject the mayor's executive order as it stands for the rest of this year. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Council... Madam Chair, may I respond?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you, Councilwoman Herbald. And I guess my point was this. Originally, I was just going to say no, because I felt that this wasn't modifying the civil emergency order during budget, for me anyway, I can't speak for anyone else, just didn't seem like the appropriate time to find, to get more information as it was coming in. I do know that they had, as you say, an influx of more people for the 911 positions. But I wanted to explore more, first of all, what we're hearing from the new administration, and also just how we were going to look at these other amendments that are coming up. So I do appreciate the work you put in, and I do understand what you're doing. So that was my original intent. So thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Herbald, we need to keep moving on, but do you want one more second?
Yeah, I just want to explain why I bring it up during budget is because it is connected to Council Madam Chair's amendment about a potential 2022 incentive program that might continue to help the departments under the current version or might add new departments. And so I've been saying, I think, pretty consistently through the budget process and through the... When we've received any questions about whether or not we're going to propose changes to the executive order, I have been saying, I believe, because the executive order could go into 2022, I believe very firmly that this is a budget issue. And that because we don't know what the impacts are for 2022, that this council should consider through a statement of legislative intent, a sort of a work plan item for the executive to look at other departments and the needs of other departments, and then to bring back to us a recommendation for a citywide bonus program to assist other departments in 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbald. I think this is a tough conversation to have absent knowing sort of where the council members stand on the existing executive order. I do appreciate the work that you and I have done to identify what information is needed. There is a sly included in our proposal here that requests the City Budget Office to report on the city-wide hiring incentive program, and that report should include an analysis for the need for citywide hiring incentives, make sure that we get recommendations on varied strategies for addressing difficulties in hiring, including but not limited to hiring bonuses, and include a race and social justice analysis of the impacts of the recommendations regarding citywide hiring incentive. I agree with you that this is not something that should be a blanket authority for the next administration in 2022 to solely decide, and I think that it requires a larger policy conversation. For me today, I'm going to hold off on voting yes on this because I am interested in getting that report back. I also don't want to have a policy signal of support for the existing proposal for hiring bonuses when we've heard directly from frontline folks, especially at SPOG, that they are not interested in this incentive. So for me today, I will be a no on this. Council President, I see your hand. I'm sorry I didn't see you before.
Oh, I raised it when you started speaking, so no need to apologize. I just, procedurally for people, because this has been sort of put out on the table here, is that I just want to make really clear that should Councilmember Herbald's proposed budget action that we're debating right now pass, then advancing the resolution as proposed by Councilmember Herbald out of committee today would effectively supersede the resolution that Councilmember Sawant flagged in her comments, and that was introduced a couple Mondays ago. So just want to make really clear from a procedural perspective that if Councilmember Herbald's resolution, you know, appears on the City Council agenda, that would supersede the aforementioned resolution that was first put on the table by Councilmember Sawant.
Thank you, Council President. Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on the adoption of CBO 512A 001 as amended by Councilmember Herbald?
Peterson?
Abstained.
Sawant?
No.
Strauss?
Abstained.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Herbald?
Yes.
Juarez?
No, I'm going to abstain. Sorry.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Shermos Keta?
No.
Four in favor, three abstentions, and two opposed.
Thank you very much. That is the majority of the voting council members. The amendment as amended passes. Thank you very much, Councilmember Herbald. The amended version of CBO 512A 001 has been adopted. Let's move on to the next item, number 193. Council members, I just want to pause for one second. Council Central Staff, are you able to walk us through the overview? Thank you so much, Jeff. Good to see you.
Sure. Item 193, HOM 14B 001 adds $1 million in coronavirus local fiscal recovery funding to HSD, to choirland for a transitional housing program. land for a transitional housing program that specialized in serving American Indians and Alaska natives. It would be offset by cutting $1 million in one-time Clifford funding in HSD for the operation of an emergency shelter. This differs from the early, the previously introduced version, which was not in the balancing package, that would have provided $4.1 million, uh, so it would have been not only the $1 million to acquire and do some work on the, the land, but then also, uh, $3.3 million for the site improvements, as well as some funding for initial operations in the first year. Uh, the $1 million reduction in Clifford funding is related to the SOTO emergency shelter that was actually previously discussed two or three amendments ago, I'm sorry, um, where the second year of funding for this program, uh, would be, uh, reduced so that the program wouldn't be able to operate for the full, uh, for the full calendar year of 2023, and instead the funds would be used, uh, here for this one-time purpose. The sponsor here is Councilmember Morales.
Thank you very much. And then as a reminder to the viewing public, if they're wondering why we're on 193 instead of 192, it is because 192 is at the top of Group D now. Councilmember Morales, would you like to move item 193 for consideration in front of us today?
Yes, I move item 193, uh, CBA HOM 14B1.
Thank you, it's been moved, is there a second? Is there a second? Councilmember Morales, I am not going to be offering any more seconds because we've got to keep moving here. So I'll ask one more time, is there a second? Okay. Councilmember Morales, uh, this item has not received a second for consideration today. Uh, we will go ahead and move on to the next item. Item number 195, please.
Uh, Madam Chair, I, we're on 90, oh yeah, okay. Uh, I had pulled, if I did it too late, um, I apologize, but I had pulled item 194.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales, yes, no, item 194 has been withdrawn. It was requested after the agenda was already in, um, publication, but that one has been withdrawn for consideration.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Morales, for helping to educate folks on where we are at. I had already taken it out of my script, so apologies for skipping over that. Thank you for noting that. We're on number 195 now.
There's Tracy Rass of Council Central Staff, item CBA OH 10116A 001. This would cut $2 million of coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds in HSD for the Salvation Army Enhanced Shelter, previously discussed, and would add $2 million of, of the Clifford funds to OH for development of a new city-run social housing acquisition program. Uh, this CBA is, uh, sponsored by Councilmember Morales, and would have the same implications in terms of the operation of the SOTO Enhanced Shelter as previously discussed.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Morales, would you like to move this item for consideration?
I'm not going down without a fight. Uh, I move, uh, CBA OH 16A1.
Item number 195 has been moved, is there a second? Is there a second? Hearing no second, Councilmember Morales, uh, for not receiving a second, this item will not advance on our agenda for discussion. We will go ahead and move on to item 196.
Hello, hi, this is, uh, Eric McConaughey, I'm the Council Central Staff. Item 196 is a statement of legislative intent sponsored by Councilmember Peterson. It's SCL, oh, I'll just say, SCL 2A1. This would request, uh, reports on the pole replacement project, uh, and another report on the office space reworking project in the Seattle Municipal Tower from Seattle City Light at the same time at the end of March of 2022.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Peterson. Would you like to move this item for consideration?
Thank you, Chair Mosketa, I'd like to move this slide, uh, which is SCL 002A 001.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, it has been moved in second, and Councilmember Peterson, would you like to describe the amendment?
Thank you, Chair Mosketa. I want to thank Central Staff for their assistance in crafting this statement of legislative intent. It requests two reports from Seattle City Light to the City Council, and, uh, it's about two different capital projects. Uh, with the recent windstorms, uh, occurred, um, after we had already, um, submitted a bunch of budget amendments, and those windstorms, uh, were a reminder about the need to focus on replacing utility poles, uh, that are aging before they fall down. And so this requests a progress report on the status of City Light's plans and results to replace and/or upgrade the system of utility poles throughout Seattle with a separate analysis of the poles on East Marginal Way. Um, this would include recommendations for expediting the replacement of those poles. The second report is about a, a line item in the capital budget to, um, uh, add $8 million for, um, uh, office space, and so on its face, it would seem that replacing utility poles would be more important than that. There are, however, some financial savings in the long, in the long run by reducing leasing costs to Seattle City Light. So we want to get these reports at the same time so we can, we can do a deeper dive on this issue and look at whether we need to accelerate the replacement, uh, of those utility poles. The, the head of Seattle City Light is fine with these requests. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Councilmember, uh, Peterson, are there any additional comments or questions? Okay, Councilmember Peterson, I will note I am supportive of this amendment. Appreciate the work you've done to follow up with City Light since the October 19th, excuse me, October 2019, um, audit that we had, uh, put forward and the conversation that we've been having about the number of light poles that have, were failing, especially on East Marginal Way. Um, appreciate the consultants' investigations and recommendations on how to mitigate the risks of light pole failure in the future, so I will be supporting this as a timely progress report, um, towards the pole replacement efforts across the city. Any additional comments or questions? Okay, Madam Clerk, will you please call the role on the adoption of SCL 002A 001?
Peterson?
Yes.
Swant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Hold on, okay, yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Chair Mosketa?
Aye.
Nine in favor and none opposed?
Thank you very much, the motion carries, and Amendment number nine, 196, uh, passes. All right, we are on to item 197.
Item 197 is S dot 009A 002. It is a statement of legislative intent that requests that S dot report on the impact of overweight vehicles by September 1st, 2022. It is offered by Councilmember Peterson.
Councilmember Peterson, um, would you like to move this item?
Thank you, Chair Mosketa, I'd like to move item, it's a slide, S dot 009A 002.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, it has been moved in second. Councilmember Peterson, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Thank you, colleagues, this is a slide that I had put forward earlier. Um, it's to determine estimated impacts to our city's infrastructure from overweight vehicles. This is a no-cost slide, it would, uh, it was discussed previously, like I said, but it would include studying damage to Seattle streets and bridges by, mainly by construction vehicles and other vehicles that seek exemptions to weight limits designed to maintain the useful life of our investments in Seattle's multimodal streets. Uh, this re, this request came up during discussion of the comprehensive plan, but it was decided this would be more appropriate for a budget statement of legislative intent. So understanding the relationship between the damage by overweight vehicles and then the cost to repair our city's multimodal streets will help to improve asset management planning and budgeting, and could yield creative and cost-effective solutions to minimize such damage from some overweight vehicles in the future. I hope that you can support this slide. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Are there any additional comments or questions? Councilmember Peterson, um, I don't see any additional hands, I'm gonna let you know that I do still have concerns on this item. We have heard from, um, some of our regional partners about whether or not there, this could be addressed outside the budget. They'd like to get a report from S dot to look at the Transportation Committee without having this be tied to a budget action. Um, I understand that it is just a slide, and understand if there is support for it today. Given the concerns that I have heard from some of our regional partners today, I will be a no on this, wanted to flag that for you, um, and our council colleagues. Please go ahead, Councilmember Herbold.
Thank you, I, I appreciate, Councilmember Peterson is bringing this forward as a slide because, um, there was a previous request that it not be de, dealt with within the context of, uh, comprehensive plan discussions. Um, so I, I'm just concerned, like, it, continuing to say, oh, don't bring it up this way, don't bring it up this way, don't bring it up this way, it's gonna just result in us not getting this information. And I have, um, you know, I have, uh, areas in my district, I'm sure other people do throughout the city, um, where heavy vehicles are a real issue. Um, and I think, um, I think getting this information is going, could be helpful in a, in a number of different ways, whether or not it's getting, um, partnership from other jurisdictions to, uh, to maintain our streets, um, and as well as, um, limiting the use of our streets inappropriately in areas like South Park where we see, um, so many, uh, large freight vehicles going through residential neighborhoods and, um, you know, as Councilperson Peterson says, really messing up the streets and also, um, you know, creating safety issues as well for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any additional comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. Uh, Madam Clerk, will you please call the role on the adoption of Amendment number 197, S dot 009A 002?
Peterson?
Yes.
Swant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Chair Mosketa?
I know.
Eight in favor, one opposed.
Okay, well, congratulations, Councilmember Peterson, it does pass, the flying colors, uh, you, uh, we do have the adoption of S dot 009A 002. Thank you very much. Let's move on to item 198.
198 is S dot 107A1. It would cut 2.4 million of general fund for the Center City Streetcar project, and would redirect those funds, um, 400,000 to Department of, uh, Early Educational Learning for bus routing technology, and 2 million to the Finance General, um, for citywide hiring incentive program. It is offered by Councilmembers Herbold and Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Herbold, would you like to move the item in front of us?
I would, thank you so much. I move, uh, CBA S dot 107A 001, is there a second?
Second.
Please go ahead, Councilmember Herbold.
Great, thank you. Um, so, as we have, um, discussed both today and in previous, um, uh, budget meetings, um, I, I think there is a, um, agreement that hiring and retention of city staff are important issues. Um, there's been special attention, uh, to the question of hiring and retention of Seattle Police Department, um, with the mayor's initial, um, uh, recommendation for a citywide hiring incentive program, and then adding the CSCC in a, um, the mayor's second proposal for, um, a hiring incentive program with the, uh, emergency order. I have been arguing that we really need to do, um, an analysis of vacancy issues among frontline workers, uh, specifically focused on those that are causing a service issue with the public or inhibiting a department from filling a core function, as well as recommendations on varied strategies to address difficulties in hiring, including but not limited to hiring bonuses. Um, coupled with a race and social justice analysis on the impacts of the recommendations regarding a citywide hiring incentive program. So, um, this, uh, action would put some, some funds, um, and put them, put those funds aside, um, because, um, the, uh, chair's balancing package does not include those funds, uh, for a subsequent 2022 action, uh, to support, uh, a potential citywide hiring incentive program. Um, again, the, my original budget action would have reserved 1.09 million dollars, moved it out of SP, uh, SPD and moved it in to, um, um, Finance General to support a 2022, um, hiring bonus incentive. Uh, again, that's not in the balancing package, so I'm proposing to fund this program otherwise. Um, this would provide $2 million in funding for a citywide, um, hiring bonus plan. Mayor's proposed budget did not include sufficient funding for hiring bonuses for 911 dispatchers, um, because, again, she, after the budget was already proposed, made a new proposal that was not, um, sufficiently funded. Second part of this package would provide funding for an item originally proposed by Councilmember Peterson, I'll let him speak to that. Um, I think these are much better uses of, of funding, uh, to, uh, than, than as, as proposed to restart the Center City Streetcar. I've noted my position on the Center City Streetcar previously, um, so in the interest of time, I, I will not, um, repeat that, um, as it relates specifically to questions that I've heard about the, um, the funding source. Um, I just want to clarify that the funds proposed here, um, are a one-time investment only, um, and would not impact the revenue stream beyond 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, I see a few hands, Councilmember Peterson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Mosketa, I'm in full support of this with Councilmember Herbold. Uh, want to speak to where 400,000 of these funds would be reallocated if this council budget action were to pass. It would help with an emerging issue, well, it's been a longstanding issue, but we've really heard a lot about it, um, this fall with, um, the, um, school bus crisis, uh, with Seattle Public Schools and, um, with a shortage of drivers, but it's also this, it's a technology solution to help, because right now the new routes are printed out on paper, and as drivers, uh, change routes, as their new drivers come in, this, um, GPS technology would enable, uh, Seattle Public School bus drivers to, to implement a much more efficient system. It's a one-time investment that we would be providing to our mutual constituents, uh, the parents of, of, um, all the children in public schools would benefit from this, knowing, you know, being able to track the buses and where they are as well. So it benefits the school bus drivers, as well as the parents, as well as Seattle Public Schools in general. And, um, and I, I want to echo what Councilmember Herbold said about the, the source of funding, this is a one-time, these are both one-time investments, um, and I think it's a, it's a good use of these funds right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Strauss, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Chair, uh, and thank you, Councilmember Herbold, for bringing this amendment forward. I wholeheartedly support the citywide hiring incentive, and I also wholeheartedly support Councilmember Peterson's request regarding the, um, $400,000 to go to school bus routing. Uh, where I have issue today is the funding source. Um, this is, I know that we don't always agree, I know that there's still a lot of conversation to be had about the streetcar. Uh, it, I just find it hard to kill the project in some senses through doing good elsewhere. And so if there was another funding source, I would wholeheartedly vote for this, I can't support it in its current iteration. Um, I do have a voice vote to, a voice amendment, uh, if you would be interested. I know that the other revenue sources, one, this is a poison pill revenue source for me, and I know that the Revenue Stabilization Fund is a poison pill for yourself and others on the council, um, but that is the voice vote that I would have available to you today. Chair, I would bring that forward at your direction.
Uh, Councilmember Strauss, I, I believe it's, it's your call, if you are wanting to make a voice vote, you, you need to offer it as a proposed amendment. If you're suggesting that for purposes of the discussion, obviously we'd welcome that as well from the, the prime sponsor, um, but, uh, I think that folks know very well how I feel about those reserves, and also do have con, some concerns about the existing revenue source that's identified in this amendment as well. So I'll put that out there, and if you decide you want to offer a, an amendment, uh, that is your prerogative.
Yes, I'd love to, I do have, I don't know if you need me to share screen for the, the language, or if, um, the clerks can, I have the script before me, so I'd like to move to amend CBA S dot 107 dash A dot dash 001, uh, and Agenda Item 198 on, uh, the agenda as follows. Amend the title to CBA S dot 107A 001, uh, cut 2.4 million general fund contribution to the Revenue Stabilization Fund, add 400,000 general fund to deal for bus routing technology, and add $2 million to General Fund Finance General for a citywide hiring incentive. Amend the budget description and transactions to reflect the change in source to, uh, be a reduction to the contribution to the RSF rather than cutting the 2022 general fund appropriation for the streetcar.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss has moved by voice amendment to amend, uh, the source of the- Councilmember Strauss has moved by voice amendment to amend the source of the revenue to come from the Revenue Stabilization Fund, as noted in the screen in front of us and described by Councilmember Strauss. Is there a second to this voice amendment? Is there a second? Councilmember Strauss, is there a second? Councilmember Strauss, hearing none.
I can't say.
Hearing none, we will.
Chairman Muscina, second. Or Madam Clerk.
Okay, the voice amendment to consider the change as proposed in the CBA action title in front of us and as noted by Councilmember Strauss has been seconded. And Councilmember Strauss, I would ask that we consider this item if it's going to relate directly to reserves in Group D. I'd like for the councils to consider holding this item till Group D. So colleagues, I'm going to make a motion to consider that. Colleagues, I'd like to go ahead and consider including S dot 107 A 001 as part of our conversation in Group D. This would, this would be included in the discussion after the newly added number 199. Is there any objection? Hearing no objection. We will consider this item in Group D, given the seconded amendment that relates to the revenue source. Okay. Thank you, colleagues. To be continued. Let's move on to the next item. Hi, great.
Chairman Muscina, I think this next item, 199, was moved to Group D.
That's correct.
After Item 200. After the other SPD item.
Yeah, it's at the end of the SPD block.
Okay. Shall we continue? The next item?
Item 200 is SPR 15 A 1. This would add 190,000 general fund in three positions to Seattle Parks and Recreation to restore the use of Laurelhurst Community Center and cut the same amount to eliminate pay increases for some non-represented executives, managers, and strategic advisors. The 2022 proposed budget ends the public use of the referenced facility. Instead, it will become available for community members to rent for discrete events and programs. This amendment, which is sponsored by Councilmember Peterson, would restore its community center use. Because the staff previously assigned there have been reassigned to other SPR programs, the amendment would add new positions to staff the facility. And these position costs would be offset by cutting the amount that is currently budgeted for 2022 annual wage increases for a subset of SPR staff.
Thank you very much. Please go ahead. Councilmember, would you like to move the item?
Yes, colleagues, I'd like to, thank you, Chair. Yes, colleagues, I'd like to move this Item 200, which is SPR 015 A 001.
Thank you very much. It's been moved. Is there a second? Going once, is there a second? Going twice?
Second, I want to learn more about it.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. It has been moved and seconded. Councilmember Peterson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Muscina, and thank you, Councilmember Herbold. Colleagues, this is, the, the Parks Department is proposing to permanently close this community center. Where the Parks Department is proposing to close this community center, and they did it with no advance notice to the community or outreach. And I really appreciate everybody's support for the addition to a program in Magnuson Park as part of our earlier approval of the consent package. This amendment is asking that we retain for the general public an existing community center so that programming can continue to be provided at a time when another community center in the area is going to be closed for most of 2022. And this, the closure, the proposed closure, the $190,000 cut to this was, was a surprise to me and to the community. And I think we should restore it. The, the source of funds is from a, the, for non-repre, the highest paid non-represented employees in the Parks Department. There is an ad for pay raise for these non-represented executives, managers, and strategic advisors. So be taking a portion of that to pay for keeping the Laurelhurst Community Center open.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Are there any additional comments or questions? Councilmember Juarez, please go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you for acknowledging that I'm having technological problems here. So I appreciate that. Councilmember Peterson, thank you for bringing this up again. Let me just explain why Parks and myself will be voting, I'm voting no on this. It's amendment, of course, that would restore the Laurelhurst Community Center, which was eliminated in the mayor's proposed budget. Seattle Parks and Rec operates 26 community centers across the city. Laurelhurst is one of the smallest and is located within three miles of three other community centers. It doesn't have an attached gym, though the facility hosts some limited recreation programming and short-term facility rentals. It does not host licensed childcare either nor showers. The return on the investment with this amendment is extremely low compared to that of the mayor's proposal. The mayor's proposal eliminates two part-time positions from Laurelhurst Community Center and uses those resources to create capacity for the Rec in the Streets program, which activates over 6,000 participants citywide compared to the limited programming of events at the community center in Laurelhurst, which has around 200 participants. If the community center is closed and transitioned into a full-time rental facility, Seattle Parks and Recs will continue to offer some programming at the adjacent Laurelhurst Elementary Gym following the mayor's proposed change. I do not support this amendment because it would limit the potential of the building to be used as a rental facility similar to that of Golden Gardens Bath House and the Pritchard Bath House, which is in high demand by groups like Rec in the Streets program. The Rec in the Streets program delivers programming in partnership with community using neighborhood-based data and equity maps. And this is something that we've been working on since 2000, and at least since I've been here, 2016. So in voting against this amendment, you would be allowing Seattle Parks and Recs to eliminate two part-time positions and use those resources to create capacity for Rec in the Streets. There are no layoffs associated with these changes. The change is a net zero reallocation of existing resources. And I know we do this a lot, so following in your footsteps, Madam Chair, I do want to thank Councilmember Peterson. And we've had some offline discussions about the community center and its, its position in the Laurelhurst community. And I do understand the importance and the need of community centers. But I also want to add that we have revamped what the public benefit is and the race and social justice equity and analysis that accompanies that for community centers, that they are used citywide and the programs are citywide. And we have worked very hard to instill that the public benefit piece is explained completely. So it isn't just that neighborhood, but all the neighborhoods. Again, I've had discussions with Superintendent Aguirre and Councilmember Peterson to discuss alternatives, opportunities, what the future could look like for the Laurelhurst Community Center. We had the same thing happen with the Lake City Community Center, where we didn't get total funding and which we were renting out space to Sound Generations, Boys and Girls Club, Children's Home Society, event, particular events. So with that, and I know, Councilmember Peterson, that you were, you were concerned that you were not told that it was going to shut down. I wasn't either until I saw it in the budget and then had a chance to talk to the superintendent and then a chance to talk to you. So with that, I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just to clarify, in the proposed budget from the mayor's office?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Peterson, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Muscina. Appreciate that, Councilmember Juarez, as Chair of our Parks Committee. And yeah, this, to clarify, this cut came from the Durcan administration. And, you know, the Laurelhurst Community Center is connected to the elementary school nearby, which 45% of those students are Black, Indigenous, or people of color. 31% of the students are low-income. And, you know, I support the, the Rec in the Streets program. I, I think, well, I don't support the highest-paid executives in Parks Department giving themselves a raise while they close the community center in my district. I do appreciate the dozens of emails that we've received from folks in the community trying to keep this open. And we'll look forward to working with the next administration to see what we can do to expand programming there and provide the best possible access and equity at that center. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Peterson. Colleagues, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote on this item. Madam Clerk, will you please call the role on the adoption of the amendment in front of us?
Peterson?
Yes.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
No.
Gonzalez?
No.
Herbold?
Sorry, yes.
Juarez?
No.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
No.
Chairman Muscina?
No.
Four in favor? Five opposed?
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Councilmember Peterson, the motion fails and the amendment is not adopted. Council colleagues, we are at the end of Group C, if my notes are correct. My notes are correct. We are at the end of Group C, and it is about 4:23. I would very much like to ask for your, I'm seeing nods from friends on the screen here. I'd very much like to ask for your consideration of continuing this conversation so we can have a wrapped-up discussion by the end of the day that allows for our central staff to be able to get right to work with finalizing the proposed budget so that we can be ready to act on Monday. I'm hoping that we will be able to get through the next Section D here with some robust discussion, respectful dialogue. I know that we all are very interested in continuing to ensure the health and safety of not only our community, but also those reserves. So with that in mind, let's go ahead and go on into Items D on our group list here. Ally, would you add anything else for context as we consider Group D in front of us? I would also like to make, oh, thank you very much, Ally and Patty. I do see that you have provided a revised list in front of us so that we have all of the items that have been moved to Group D in front of us for the purposes of following the conversation, both for councilmembers and for members of the public. Ally, would you like to walk us through this?
Thank you, Chairman Muscina. So this is a, there are several of the amendments in this group. The majority of them are proposing to use the fiscal reserves. So before I describe the first item, I'll just note that I will be tracking along the way as each amendment is before you, if you, if they, they pass, whether or not, at what point we reach having overspent the amount of fiscal reserves or the, the sort of total amount that the, the council could reduce the contribution to fiscal reserves in, in 2022. So I will be tracking that as we go. The first item in this group, if I, if you want me to just jump in?
That'd be great.
Great. Is Item 192. This was removed from Group C, FG 901 A 1. This is sponsored by Councilmember Muscina. And this would cut $2 million of Clifford Fund that was included in the proposed budget as a FEMA contingency and reallocate for general fund to address additional revenue shortfall in the sweetened beverage tax, as well as restore the funding for the proposed expansion of the Community Service Office, Office Program. So this action, combined with the omnibus amendment we discussed previously, has supported changes in the chair's balancing package to not, to continue the proposed expansion of the Community Safety Officer Program in 2022 to address the revenue shortfall in the sweetened beverage tax. And this is also, again, supported by some of the actions in the omnibus amendment. And I will leave it there.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, I'm going to go ahead and move the item so that it's in front of us. I do have a verbal amendment that I have sent around early this morning about 9:30 to make a small modification based on some conversations that we had with community partners and the reality of when to stand up that program. So let me put that in front of us first. Colleagues, I move to consider FG 901 A 001. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair. It has been moved and seconded. As Ally described, this initial amendment was offering the ability to do a number of things, one of which is to make sure, as we have continued to hear from councilmembers, there has been strong support for the Community Service Officer Program. There was support just two months ago with making sure that they had the funding needed to fill 10 vacant positions. And I would like to see if, if it's more appropriate for me to pause for a second to see if someone should describe the walk-on amendment and then I can move it. Would that, would that be appropriate? Ally? Or agree?
Sure, Chairman Muscina. Patty, if you could put the, the verbal amendment for this item on the screen. And I'm going to ask my colleague Greg Dos to help explain this one. But I can provide the initial overview. In general, this would change the proposed reduction from the FEMA contingency to 1.6 million. And it would assume delayed or staggered hiring dates for the proposed expansion of the Community Safety Officer Program. So it would, it would provide about $900,000 of funding in 2022 for the Community Safety Officer Program, which is about $400,000 less than what was proposed and would retain some funding as a FEMA contingency should some of the FEMA-backed expenditures the city has been undertaking not be reimbursed at some point in the future.
And then what I would have to add to that is that the reduction in the Community Service Officer funding, you may be familiar that it was proposed in the mayor's 2022 proposed budget at 1.3 million. The 400,000 reduction would assume that the Police Department would have some delay in getting those folks on board through the hiring process and through the background process. And that those folks would be coming in staggered later towards the end of the second quarter and through the summer. And then the $400,000 adjustment is a salary adjustment under those assumptions.
Thank you very much. So colleagues, in order to make that adjustment and the slight reduction, thank you very much, Patty, for putting this on the screen here. Colleagues, my verbal amendment to FG 901 A 001 is to instead cut, instead of two, I would reduce the Clifford Funds by 1.6 million for the FEMA contingency and reallocate it for general fund and the sugary sweetened beverage tax revenue replacement for food and nutrition programs and provide funding for salaries and vehicles for the staggered expansion of the, starting in quarter two of the Community Safety Officer Program that would allow for the scaling up and expansion of the program as originally suggested. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, appreciate the opportunity to have this verbal amendment in front of you. It does a number of things. So I do want to point out the importance of having been able to offer stability and funding back to the sugary sweetened beverage tax. We know that the intention here for sugary sweetened beverage taxes to continue to see declining revenue if we are successful in getting fewer people to drink sugary sweetened beverages. But in order for us to respond to the sharp decrease in revenues that they've experienced because of COVID and fewer people eating out and ordering sodas and things like that, we wanted to make sure that we responded so that the programs that they're currently serving and the assistance they're offering does not see a rapid decline. We did not want to reduce any of the funding for the sugary sweetened beverage tax recipients. We're also very excited about the opportunity to work with members of Teamsters 117 and the community to identify ways for us to add an additional six FTEs. These are non-sworn, non-officer positions. We know that these are largely being filled by individuals who are coming from communities of color, who ostensibly have more trust, who have more opportunities to engage with community. With not having a gun in hand allows for us to create that more trusting engagement. And as we've said before, council, that was city council, who really worked to prioritize getting those CSOs stood up in the first place. I see our Vice Chair's hand here, who was leading that effort. I appreciate her leadership, Council President Gonzalez's leadership on this. And we'll continue to work to have a conversation about where are the best places to house the CSOs in the future. As you've heard me talk about before, with community in the name, I would very much like to be able to have a community-oriented house or department for them in the future. But that's not what this conversation is about today. It is about making sure that we are allowing for this to be stood up and, and to really expand those services beginning in quarter two. And appreciate the work that you all have done in the past so we can build on this.
provisoing dollars associated with the gap in time that was estimated that they would not be able to hire for in 2022. This particular action cuts 400,000. I was instructed, if I wanted to, I think, do the same thing that you're doing with your reduction, if I wanted to proviso the funds, that the dollar amount at the time was 200,000. So I'm just wondering why that number has changed in the last couple of weeks?
I can offer some, oh, please go ahead.
That's because the, the assumptions are different. Your assumptions were that it was going to be the end of the first quarter that you would have all of the members, all the CSOs onboard and that would be equal to 200,000. And the assumptions behind this one are end of second quarter for 400,000.
Ah, okay. Thank you. And by allowing for that staggering language, and we also recognize that they probably won't come all at the same time, so if some of them come midway through Quarter Two and some of them come at the end or some of them come at the beginning of the next quarter, then the staggered opportunity allows for the, the funding to be there when they do come. I also would say we're not putting any provisos on the language as you currently see, so they will be able to continue to hire. We hope they can hire at a faster rate, but obviously we'll continue to adjust if there is additional funding needed. Councilmember Lewis, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank you for bringing this amendment forward here and just express my gratitude for being able to work with you and bringing this to be here today. I had prepared a similar but different CBA effectuating a similar result and withdrew it in anticipation of supporting this amendment today and appreciate the opportunity to do so and, and appreciate you bringing this forward.
Thank you. And Councilmember Lewis, I should have noted that you and Councilmember Erbold, similar interest in making sure this is addressed. So I appreciate your comments there and also your work on the amendment that you had initially submitted for the CBAs and Councilmember Erbold for your initial initial amendment from the get-go here. I do want to note, a note of appreciation as well that we've received from Teamsters 117 and their support for this amendment as amended as well. We do have the amendment in front of us. Is there any additional comments on the amendment to the amendment? Okay, hearing no additional comments on the amendment to the amendment. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the verbal amendment made to FG 901A001?
Peterson?
Abstain.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Erbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Chair Mosketa?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one abstention, none opposed.
Thank you, colleagues. The walk-on, excuse me, the verbal amendment to FG 901A001 is adopted. We now have the amended amendment in front of us. Councilmember Erbold, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Just really quickly, I want to recognize that in the earlier rounds of the budget discussions, I had, I had a draft amendment that I didn't end up bringing forward that would have moved the CSOs into the new Community Safety and Communications Center. I had met with Teamsters and the represented CSOs and learned from them that they weren't ready to make that move. And I assured them that I did not believe that the fact that they weren't ready to make the move would not have an impact on the council's support for their expansion. So I'm really, really, really appreciative of Madam Chair's action here today in, you know, just allowing my, my anticipated reaction from my colleagues to their, the fact that they weren't ready to be, to move to be the, the action of record that we end up taking today. I, I was feeling bad when it wasn't in the Chair's package and so really appreciate correcting that here. The CSOs are very, very supported in the community and really want to work with them in, in everything that they do to represent community safety in our city. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Erbold, appreciate that. Look forward to working with you on those future conversations too and our friends at Teamsters. Okay. If there's no additional comments or questions, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on amended version of FG 901A001.
Peterson?
Abstain.
Sawant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Erbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Chair Mosketa?
Aye.
Eight in favor, one abstention, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. The motion carries and the amended amended, the amended amendment is adopted. Thanks, colleagues. I believe that puts us at number 201 in voting group number, letter D, apologies, 201.
Right. I've been asked to, to provide an overview of this block of SPD amendments and so I'm going to do a quick overview here. We're going to go into about four amendments, actually three amendments. We've, we've just handled one walk-on and we're going to have another walk-on proviso that is Councilmember Peterson walk-on that is tied to some of his amendments that will be coming up. We'll only reach that one if some of his amendments pass. Each of these amendments is sequenced and is designed to work in conjunction with the amendments that passed in Group A. So as the amendments in Group A pass particular cuts to SPD, these amendments would restore those cuts and add them back. And they would add them back depending on, on the particular amendment, some partially or some whole, and we'll be going into each one to talk about that. As we progress, progress through the list, the earlier amendments will affect the later amendments. And so that's something that Ally will be keeping track of, both from a use of fiscal reserves standpoint, and I will be keeping track of as to the relevance of whether we need to reach the later amendments. So just wanted to give you that as an overview and then go ahead and jump into the next item, which is 201. So this item is an omnibus amendment that, at a very high level, restores nearly all of the cuts made to the Seattle Police Department. The total amount of cuts that are made to the Seattle Police Department in the Chair's budget is about $10.8 million. This particular amendment would restore $10 million. There is in the Seattle Police Department about $850,000 of salary savings that both the department and the council acknowledge is unprogrammed at this point. And SPD 006, Councilmember Erbold's CBA cuts 850,000. So, so that's acknowledged as salary savings and that piece probably wouldn't be captured here, but every other, every other CBA and every other cut to the tune of $10 million would be, would be captured by this CBA. And so I'll, I'll do a quick run-through of, of all the components that we're talking about here. The first one we're talking about is the assumptions that the Chair's budget makes around hiring. And as you'll recall, SPD 008A001 makes some different assumptions about hiring from the mayor's proposed budget. The mayor's proposed budget believes that there are only going to be 94 separations and the Chair's budget believes that there are going to be 125 separations. The 125 separations consisting of two parts, the first being 12 COVID-related separations that will happen in January, and then the rest being a hiring separation plan or a separation plan that would more or less equal 113 separations, the same that happened last year, that would mirror last year's council separation plan. You put those two things together and it would allow the council to cut $2.7 million. This, this package would restore that $2.7 million. This package would also restore the $1.3 million for personnel costs and vehicles for CSOs. And so given your actions on the last amendment, this would be something that if you're considering this amendment, either the sponsor or another council member may want to consider a verbal amendment to take that piece out. Otherwise, you would be double funding the CSOs. This particular action would also reverse the overtime cut. As you'll recall, there's $7.8 million of, of new overtime funding in the budget and CBA 006A001 cuts 3.2 million. This particular action would restore that entire 3.2 million. There is in the Chair's budget $475,000 of administrative cuts. That breaks out into $300,000 of discretionary purchase cuts and $175,000 of travel and training cuts respectively. Those again are in SPD 006A001, both would be restored entirely. And then there is also in the mayor's proposed budget, $5 million for technology projects. The Chair's budget would cut 1.24 million of those technology projects and, and two projects specifically that, that we have talked about in the past when we've gone over the Chair's budget. This, this particular amendment would restore those two, two projects. And all of those things added together come to $10 million and they would be funded by the Revenue Stabilization Fund.
Greg, I think it would be important for us to put the chart back on the screen that you walked through on Friday, though. We did use the word "cut" again and I know we're talking about how we change our, our language for next year, but again, these are reduced increases in some cases, reduced increase to overtime, a reduced increase to technology. And we have maintained funding for certain areas like travel and training. We have maintained the investment amounts in, in the, in the mayor's budget in a number of places. So I'm not sure if we have the opportunity to pull up that chart or if we need another few minutes, but could you offer any additional information about the use of the term "cut" versus what, as it, as it relates to the mayor's proposed package and offer that clarification that we heard so clearly last Friday?
Yeah, happy to do so. So the, the, the big picture here again is that the mayor's proposed budget did two things. It restored some baseline cuts that were made by the council last year and it also refunded or funded 134 vacant police positions that cannot be filled, not even under the, under the, the executive's proposed hiring plan. And so what that did is it created $19 million of salary savings in the department and then that $19 million of salary savings is redistributed along with the baseline ads, redistributed towards a number of these areas that we have talked about. So it is the case that, that those redistributions of that money, of that salary funding, it, it is the case that, that it is a, a cut from the mayor's proposed budget, but it is in actuality redirected salary funding that probably should have in the baseline process gone back into the General Fund. And some of these items, like say the technology items, should have been proposed to the council as their own distinct new items. And so it's not so much making a cut as it is choosing to not make an add.
Thank you so much. And we will take questions about the overview of those three that you noted. Because you did note the 134 vacant positions that the mayor's budget continues to assume, even if they are redirecting the use of those dollars for one-time purposes, by having those vacant positions repeatedly there, we allow for, you know, near $20 million to carry over year over year. So do you mind, in your summary here, very briefly, also touching on Amendment Number 199, which will trail those three that you just summarized?
Amendment Number 199.
And that is?
Is that the, is that the abrogation of the 101 positions?
That is SPD 012A001.
So, so that is, that is, that is an amendment that is brought by Councilmember Gonzalez and it is, and Councilmember Morales as a co-sponsor, and that is an amendment that would abrogate 101 positions and it would, by abrogating those 101 positions in future budget years, it would make it, well, it would make it technically not possible for the executive to send over a budget that is funding vacant positions and then moving that money elsewhere for other things.
Thank you, Greg. We'll get more into the details on all of these. Councilmember Strauss, I see that you have your hand up, so before we consider any of the amendments that were just described, again, we're starting with Number 201 as we get into this. Do you have any additional questions for Greg on this macro perspective? Stepping back a few layers here, go ahead and ask any questions.
Thank you, Chair. Noting what Greg said, it brought to my attention that the CSOs are part of this amendment as well as some of the other aspects. The, there's a, an amendment from Councilmember Lewis to assume executives' staffing plan separations and then Councilmember Erbold's amendment regarding citywide hiring incentives. My request here is if we could put D1 and D2 at the end of the list because, you know, I'm, I'm going to support these other bills on, on the table right now and I think that the outcome of those bills will influence my decision about D1 and D2.
Process-wise, there's been a request to include Item D1 and D2 at the end, so I believe that that would mean after Number 198. Hearing no objection to moving D1. And if you have an objection, please say objection because there's a few hands up that have, I think, are in the queue.
I would object to that.
Okay.
I would object to that as well.
Thank you very much. Okay. Just wanted to make sure we got through the procedural motions there. Councilmember Strauss, we will continue with the items as listed on this, this sheet because of the objections, no problem, colleagues. We will get a chance to get to every one of them. All right. I appreciate the overview. We have three hands for questions and I do want to make sure that we get into the heart of each of these items. So do you have any clarifying questions that you have for Greg before we consider individual amendments? Councilmember Lewis, your hands up first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just really quickly, Greg, can you remind everyone what the two technology ads we declined, or sorry, that Councilmember Mosketa declined to incorporate into the balancing package as an ad were?
Sure. There were, there was one called the Active Workforce Wellness Management and it was for about a half a million dollars. And it was one that would purchase biomedical devices and software that would measure physiological indicators, meaning the heart rate, respiration, skin responses, et cetera, of stress and nervous system responses that police officers might give off as they were heading to calls and listening to live 911, coming over the speakers from the dispatchers or just in general as they were heading to the calls.
that have um, I think are in the queue.
I would object to that.
Okay.
I would object to that as well.
Thank you very much, okay. Just wanted to make sure we got through the procedural motions there. Uh, Council Member Strauss, we will continue with the items as listed on this, this sheet because of the objections, no problem colleagues, we will get a chance to get to every one of them. All right, I appreciate the overview. We have three hands for questions, and I do want to make sure that we get into the heart of each of these items. So do you have any clarifying questions that you have for Greg before we consider individual amendments? Council Member Lewis, your hands up first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just really quickly, Greg, uh, can you remind everyone what the two technology ads we declined, uh, or, or sorry, that uh, Council Member Mosqueta declined to incorporate into the balancing package um, as an ad were?
Sure, um, there were, there was one called the Active Workforce Wellness Management, and it was for about a half a million dollars, and it was one that would purchase biomedical devices and software that would uh, measure physiological indicators, meaning the heart rate, respiration, skin responses, et cetera, of stress and nervous system responses uh, that uh, police officers might give off uh, as they were heading to calls and listening to live nine-one-one coming over the speakers from the dispatchers, or just in general, as they were heading to the calls, to uh, be able to assess whether or not there would be uh, negative reactions from listening to nine-one-one, uh, live nine-one-one. And then um, the other one was called the Equity Accountability and Quality Forum and Trulio Software. And the idea there was that software would be purchased that would be able to take the body-worn camera video, and, and specifically the audio that those devices are capturing, and transcribe it into written documents, and then software would be able to analyze those documents for uh, various kinds of disparity or other kinds of disproportionality in policing, and that would be something that would be done uh, in conjunction with the uh, OIG, and that is a project that would cost seven hundred and uh, forty thousand dollars. And those two particular projects are not uh, funded in the chair's package, and they together cost one point two million.
Thank you. Clarifying questions? Council Member Herbald, please go ahead.
Um, not a clarifying question, more a statement around um, all of the items, just so, don't need to talk on each one of them, just an overarching point on all of the items that uh, rely on the use of fiscal reserves, um, even though some of those are items that I've supported and co-sponsored in earlier rounds. Um, but I just feel very strongly that I want to support the direction from the chair um, and, and um, what we've also heard from, from central staff and our budget director, uh, Dr. Noble. The um, most recent revenue forecast raised a note of caution about twenty-twenty-two revenues uh, with the continuing impact of COVID pandemic uh, regarding payroll tax revenues and uh, commercial parking tax. Um, we also face the risk of the chamber's lawsuit against the Jump Start Payroll Tax, which is on appeal, and could blow a two-hundred-million-dollar hole in the twenty-twenty-two budget and leave the twenty-twenty-one budget out of balance as well. Council added additional funds to the fiscal reserves last year after, again, under the leadership of Chair Mosqueta. Um, and so consequently, all of the items in um, group D that reserve, that rely on the use of these reserves, I will not be supporting. Thank you.
Council Member Herbald, I appreciate those comments, and thank you for summarizing so succinctly the concerns uh, that our city faces from an economic forecasting perspective, and your support for um, the maintenance of the reserves. Council Member Peterson, clarifying questions or macro comments?
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta, and um, appreciate Greg's very thorough overview of all of these. Um, just to, heads up, in terms of the community service officers, I really appreciate the Chair um, her, her work, uh, Chair Mosqueta for restoring that, or maintaining that, the expansion of that program. So there would be an amendment I would be making to both two oh one and two oh two to, to, uh, not to double count the community service officer program, so those amounts would be adjusted accordingly in an amendment to the amendments, and there will also be a proviso on the overtime for both of those amendments for two oh one and two oh two. So there'll be a, a somewhat complicated motion that I would be making, but I just wanted to give a heads up, since we were starting with the ten million dollar, it'll actually be eight point seven million because the one point three of the community service officer is already elsewhere in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Colleagues, I'm not seeing any additional questions for Greg on the overall concepts and issues that he has raised, so let's go ahead and get into this. We have in front of us, uh, D one, number two zero one on our agenda. Uh, Council Member Peterson, you are the sponsor, would you like to move it for consideration?
Yes, thank you, Chair Mosqueta. I'm gonna move it um, i- i- including those um, adjustments that I just mentioned, so, and, and the clerk can tell me if I did it correctly here. So I moved to um...
Council Member Peterson, just, uh, let's move the, yeah, move the bill as it's listed on the agenda, and then you can, if there's a second, then you can work to uh, include your, your uh, verbal amendment.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'd like to move uh, item SPD zero one five, A zero zero one, two oh two two on today's agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and Council Member Peterson, you are welcome to now, if you'd like, um, make the motion for your verbal amendment.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. Uh, now I'd like to move to amend CBA SPD zero one five, A zero zero one as follows, be substituting the uh, council budget action title to read as follows, to add eight point seven million general fund to SPD, to restore the cuts in the chair, restore the reductions in the chair's balancing package, and to uh, reduce or cut eight point seven million general fund contribution to the revenue stabilization fund, and proviso three point two million general fund in SPD for overtime. So this is doing two things, this is reducing the amount because community service officers are already covered uh, elsewhere, thank you, Chair Mosqueta for that, and then it provisos three point two million portion of the overtime as part of this amendment.
Thank you very much, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and Greg, would you have any additional clarifying comments? I see your hands up.
Yeah, I, I just want to say that the proviso, Council Member Peterson, is actually a separate action. Uh, I'll ask Ally to, to confirm this for me, but I think, I think in this action, you're just amending the dollars to, to take out the CSOs, so they're not double-funded. And then when you reach your proviso, you would change the dollar amount depending on whether uh, zero one five, SPD zero one five passes, or whether SPD zero one six passes. So...
Uh, sorry, sorry, excuse me, Greg. I think actually the, the motion the Council Member Peterson just made essentially moved his proposed walk-on into this verbal amendment, and so it would be, if that passes, if this amendment, the amendment passes, the walk-on amendment would be, and, and then the overall action passes, the walk-on amendment would be removed for consideration, from consideration.
Okay, great. So then the walk-on is now part of this as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, colleagues, we have the amended version of SPD zero one five, A zero zero two, twenty twenty-two, uh, in front of us. Uh, Council Member Peterson, you offered a summary, would you like to continue to add to your comments?
Yes, Chair Mosqueta, I didn't know if I needed, do I need a second for that amendment?
I believe you received one from Council Member Juarez. Council Member Juarez, can you confirm if you seconded that?
I sure did, thank you.
All right, thank you, Council Member, Council Member Juarez had seconded that, um, and I will turn it back to you.
Thank you. And colleagues, I know as we get into this issue, I just want to um, thank the Chair for um, her inclusiveness in this budget process and the collaboration, and just to remind the viewing public of how much we have agreed on today and the unity on so many important issues, and this issue is always a, a tough one for the council and, uh, but it's worth, it's worth the discussion and the debate, and um, so appreciate the grace in putting forward this amendment, I'll explain it uh, now. So we have uh, various options before us today on how to address the mayor's budget request for Seattle's Police Department, and um, this first option would essentially restore the mayor's original request. Um, appreciate Chair Mosqueta um, elsewhere in the budget, um, making sure we do continue to expand the community service officer program, hence the change in the amount here to eight point seven million for the restoration. Um, again, this, this essentially is trying to restore what the mayor had originally requested. Police Chief Diaz reiterated their rationale for each of the items requested in the budget, and the, and the incoming mayor has also publicly talked about an interest in preserving these resources for the department in twenty-twenty-two. Uh, the mayor had originally proposed an overall SPD budget of three hundred and sixty-five million for next year, which was an increase of about three million over the twenty-twenty-one adopted budget of three hundred and sixty-two million. The various budget reductions already in play would reduce the mayor's request by about nine or ten million, um, again, thanking the Chair for um, keeping the expansion of the community service officer program. And we could certainly dissect each line item further, but the theme of this is to honor the executive's total request. Um, the goal in, in my mind is to send a positive message to those city government employees in uniform, officers and detectives who remain committed to Seattle, knowing that we have much work to do on police accountability issues. I believe that honoring the original budget request uh, from the executive will help us to retain officers after Seattle has already experienced a net loss, two hundred officers, the three hundred who left, and the hundred who have since been hired. I, I think there's a, a lot of interest potentially in the next items, um, such as items two oh two, two oh three on today's agenda, so I don't want to belabor the, the point here on this particular amendment. Um, again, I, I believe the issue of how we allocate funds for public safety is an issue of timing. I, I'd like to see more alternatives scale up first, and, and I believe we need to have a police contract revamped, and uh, I do want to note that this proposal would tap the revenue stabilization fund, not, not the emergency fund. The amendment leaves intact the emergency fund. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Council Member Swant, followed by Council Member Lewis, Council Member Swant. Oh, excuse me, um, Council Member Swant, one second, please. Uh, Ally, did you have a clarifying comment you'd like to offer?
I just wanted to take a, a minute to just read the proviso into the, into the record, so it is clear for the public what the, 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 what the proviso does as part of the conversation, if that would make sense.
Please go ahead, and then we'll go to Council Member Swant.
Thank you. So what is on the screen in front of you is the walk-on amendment that Council Member Peterson distributed um, before five o'clock yesterday, that he just verbally included in this amendment with a slight modification in terms of the amount, but the provide, what the proviso would do, um, it would say, "Up the appropriation in the twenty-twenty-two budget for the Seattle Police Department Special Operations Budget Summary Level," not going to read the code, "three point two million may not be spent until authorized by a future ordinance." Just wanted to make sure that was clear on, on what the, what the restriction would be um, uh, what restriction would be imposed on their budget by this action.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you for waiting, Council Member Swant, and please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I know we have discussed both the amendment, uh, to the amendment, and then the amendment itself, so just wanted to speak to all of it all at once. I will be voting no on the overall budget amendment, but um, I believe we will be doing an amendment, a vote on the amendment to the amendment, and I'll be voting yes on that. Just wanted to clarify to members of the public that uh, regardless of the result of that vote, I will be voting no on the overall budget amendment. Thank you so much.
Okay, and if I could offer um, just some clarification, right, you're voting yes because of the sort of technical nature of the reduction in the amount, um, is that correct? Council Member Swant, is that what your flagging for, folks?
Yes, I am, it is a technical amendment.
Okay, all right, thank you, Council Member Swant, for that background. Um, Ally, I see your hand up again, did you have another clarifying comment? Okay, I carry over hand, no problem. Uh, Council Member Lewis, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, following on Council Member Swant's comments just now, are we, is what's before us voting to reflect the addition back of the CSOs? So if I have comments on the, the overall amendment, should I wait? Just clarifying.
Um, uh, if I can answer, and maybe uh, Central Staff has a comment as well, the, uh, this is, uh, this is just um, the technical aspect of it. I think if you would like to speak to the overall budget implications, you're welcome to, uh, maybe just as soon as we get through this technical amendment.
Yeah, let's, let's just enter this first, and, and then I'm happy to make more comments later.
That's appreciated. Is there any other additional comments on the amendment to SPD zero one five, A zero zero one, two zero, two two in front of us? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on the adoption of the amendment to item number two zero one in front of us? Peterson?
Yes.
Swant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Herbald?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Chair Mosqueta?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you, Council Member, um, thank you very much, uh, Madam Clerk. Council Member Peterson, the amendment carries, the amended version of SPD zero one five, A zero zero one is now in front of us. Now's the time for substantive conversation, um, and Council Member Lewis, I think you were first up in the queue there, um, I had just called on you, if you'd like to go ahead and offer your comment, you're welcome to use your time for that.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, happy to jump in and have this discussion, and appreciate that Council Member Peterson has brought this forward so we can have this conversation, since there's been so much uh, scrutiny uh, of this area in the news recently. Um, I want to start just by doing a little bit of table setting and talking about this, and really hold up the balancing package that Council Member Mosqueta has put forward to just um, recognize things that I don't think have been um, fairly recognized uh, in some of the public scrutiny. Uh, and like, this will be disappointing um, to some members of the public on both sides who've been following this discussion, because no matter how these amendments go today, um, there is a fully funded hiring plan for SPD that Council Member Mosqueta has funded, that has not always been fairly recognized in the discourse we've been facing. Um, so for folks who are advocates of deeper defunding, no matter what, with these amendments from Council Member Peterson um, and Council Member Juarez and myself, there's going to be a fully funded hiring package whether these amendments pass or not. Um, and I think it's important to note the restorations of overtime funding relative to two thousand and twenty, uh, and other additions that have been requested by the department and by the mayor that Council Member Mosqueta has incorporated into our baseline package, and I, I just want to express my gratitude at the opening here, um, at the diligence of Chair Mosqueta and Central Staff in incorporating and baking in a lot of those priorities to the budget. Um, you know, that said, I do think there are things in these amendments that I would like to, to tweak, to build on some of those themes. Uh, I, I cannot support this particular amendment from Council Member Peterson, and I do have three reasons and wanted to go on the record why um, I will not be supporting this particular eight point seven million dollar amendment. The first one was alluded to uh, by Council Member Herbald, referencing a November eighteenth memo that we received from Budget Director Ben Noble, indicating that the years ahead potentially lay out uh, some concerning scenarios about the sustainability of the city's overall budget. The revenue stabilization fund is going to be an important component of making sure that we can balance uh, a- and sustain certain priorities in worst-case scenarios, and I think it's important that we um, uh, really prioritize looking into what we're doing at this moment right now to make some final additions to the chair's balancing package uh, in the message that we're sending on the revenue stabilization fund. I, I do think it is appropriate, and I have sponsored several ads uh, um, this afternoon uh, seeking to, to take from the fund, so I'm not, obviously I'm not a stickler um, about it, but to the extent that we can triage in talking specifically about this fund in terms of what we want to send a signal we're willing to fund, I think it should be limited to things that are most essential, things that lead to increased accountability in city service delivery, or things that leverage external funding opportunities, and I'll, I'll talk about some of that in some of my other amendments. Um, I think that with this uh, amendment and the way I think it is distinct um, from Council Member Peterson's uh, next proposal that I will be voting for, and I'm going to go into the details on why I'm voting for that um, next, is the, the most important considerations uh, in front of us that could have an impact in terms of service delivery on the street for public safety systems, is really the items that are baked into that Second Amendment, and really the things that we have been talking about in the public discourse that the public is concerned about. It's hiring incentives to make sure that we can continue to atta- attract and retain, um, given our hiring challenges in the Seattle Police Department. It's increased overtime for events, um, seeing the Seattle Kraken now playing, and a large uh, uh, return of uh, significant uh, community events and sporting events in twenty-twenty-two relative to twenty-twenty-one. Um, and, and the, a change in the attrition assumptions, which I have brought a separate amendment to discuss even further, and, and which I would just like to um, uh, plan for the contingencies uh, in regards to now, rather than waiting for potentially a supplemental if our predictions are wrong, uh, and I'm happy to talk about more of that in future amendment discussions than right here, but those are the most important considerations that are included in this amendment, but they're also included in Council Member Peterson's second... they're also included in Councilmember Peterson's second proposed amendment, and they are included to a certain extent in an amendment that I have brought. And that brings me to my third and last consideration, which is, I frankly do think there are some things that Councilmember Mosqueta did not add that were prudent decisions to not add at this current time, given the information that we know. And I did ask Greg Doss some questions at the beginning here, just to clarify specifically the technology investments, which is a component of this amendment that Councilmember Peterson has brought forward today, of two technology projects that I think this council largely agrees, and Chairman Mosqueta has indicated her thoughts on this multiple times, that these are good technology investments that would be nice to have. But given the variety of budget pressures that we are facing this cycle, they are things that we should continue to look at and potentially defer to a future time to budget rather than fund right now. So I think that the thing that is really going to deliver the essential public safety services that a lot of us are talking about in the public discourse are included in the upcoming amendment from Councilmember Peterson that I believe, once amended, will come in at 4.02 million. That amendment, I think, is a prudent and effective response to the public safety challenges we're facing in the city right now. I think that it also balances the pressure on this particular funding source, given the concerns that have been expressed by the City Budget Office and by Central Staff. And I will be voting no on this amendment, but voting yes on that coming amendment. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Are there any additional comments or questions on this amendment?
Okay. Hearing none, I would encourage a no vote as well. I will not underscore again the points that were made by the vice chair and Councilmember Lewis just a moment ago about the use of the reserves, but especially trying to weigh the importance of getting prepared for the downturn in the economy coming, if that materializes, and/or a uptick in coronavirus cases. We really need to be prepared. So for that and other policy considerations that I've articulated before, I will be voting no. And thank you, Councilmember Peterson, for bringing this forward and for allowing this discussion. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the adoption of SPD 015A 001 as amended?
Peterson?
Yes.
Swant?
No.
Strauss?
No.
Gonzalez?
No.
Herbold?
No.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
No.
Morales?
No.
Chairman Mosqueta?
No.
Two in favor, seven opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion fails, and the amendment is not adopted. Let's move on to item number 202. Councilmember Peterson, I believe this is your amendment again. Would you like to move the underlying amendment in front of us, SPD 016A 001?
Yes, Chairman Mosqueta, thank you. Colleagues, I'd like to move amendment CBA SPD 016A 001 on today's agenda.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded. Councilmember Peterson, you are recognized to speak to this, or we could have Central Staff summarize the amendment that you, I think, are going to tee up to make the adjustment as well, if you'd like to.
Thank you, Chairman Mosqueta. I think, just a quick overview, this is a more, taking some of the feedback received from several colleagues. This is a more surgical or strategic version of the previous amendment, and it would be great to hear from Central Staff to break that down. And there will be an amendment to, because the Community Service Officer Program, thank you, Chairman Mosqueta, is being maintained, that expansion, this number will be reduced, and then we'll put in the proviso right here for provising the overtime portion of this. But it would be great if Greg Doss would be willing to run through the line item differences.
Yeah, sure. So if the last one was add nearly everything back, this one is add half back is probably the headline. It is a restoration of 5.32 million. And of course, as you note, Councilmember Peterson, after the amendment to adjust for the CSOs, that will go to about $4 million. And then you will also, I assume, put in your proviso, as you have said, that would restrict the overtime expenditure. So I'll go through that. This one is a little different, starting with the staffing plan. Members will remember that there are two components to the reductions that were made to, or the changes in assumptions that were made to the staffing plan. The first component being that there would be 12 COVID separations in January, and the rest, the other component being that the separations would look like they did last year, at least the assumptions would be the same, that there would be 113 leaving throughout the year. This particular amendment would assume the same 12 COVID separations in January, but it reverts back to the 94 separations that the executive assumes. And so basically, in a nutshell, this is the SPD hiring and separations plan with the exception that it does subtract funding for 12 COVID separations in January. And so what that means is that it is adding back $1.43 million for that adjustment. So just to repeat it, it defaults back to the executive's staffing plan for 94 separations and then 125 hires, but it does assume that you would have 12 separations in January. So I guess, in essence, you would get eventually to 106 separations. And then it also does the add-back for the CSOs at 1.3 million. With overtime, the prior amendment had restored all of the council cut to overtime, which was 3.2 million. This amendment would restore half of that. It would restore 1.5 million. And then if the proviso is passed, the proviso holds that 1.5 million until future council appropriation. And the idea being that the council would monitor the department's overtime use, and if such time came along that the department needed that overtime, then they could pass a future ordinance to provide it. This particular amendment would also add back 1.09 million for the hiring incentives. Although I would point out that, given the action that the council took earlier for the department to be able to use this money in 2022, legislation would need to be passed for them to be able to use it. And then finally, it uses the, again, the Revenue Stabilization Fund to pay for these items. One difference between this one and the last one, this one does not restore the technology that technology adds. So that's a high-level overview. Ask if there are any questions.
I would just want to offer a piece of clarification. Again, we talked about restoring the overtime. As a reminder, though, again, folks, we have included 4.6 million in new investments in overtime in our underlying budget here in front of us. So this would be adding on top of that the $3.2 million that the mayor had originally asked for. Just as a reminder, though, the existing budget with the add of 4.6 million already includes 26.4 million for overtime. Is there any additional questions? I would like to go ahead and have Councilmember Peterson, if you'd like to move your verbal amendment that Greg just walked through, it would be in front of us for your consideration.
Thank you, Chairman Mosqueta. I'll go ahead and make the motion to change the dollar amounts and add the proviso. It's a lot of information here, but I'll run through it quickly. So I would move to substitute the council budget action title to read as follows, add 4.02 million general fund to SPD for partial assumption of the executive staffing plan separations, hiring incentives. I would not have CSOs in there, but overtime. And then to cut 4.02 million general fund contribution to the Revenue Stabilization Fund and proviso the 1.5 million general fund and SPD for overtime. So that's the budget action. Then amending CB 512A 001 to read as follows.
Councilmember, yeah.
Yeah. I think that's not, there's a copy and paste here, sorry. So I'd be amending the action to add 4.02 million general fund to SPD to the chair's balancing package and cut 4.02 million general fund contribution to the Revenue Stabilization Fund, and then adding the proviso 1.5 million to SPD for overtime.
Okay. Before we take a vote on that, before I ask for a second, I do want to ask if there's any technical changes that Central Staff would offer to the verbal amendment.
I think that is accurate. There is a lot of moving pieces, but it's the amending of the title, as Councilmember Peterson described, and then Central Staff, similarly, as part of the verbal amendment, would update the description and transactions to reflect those changes as described by Councilmember Peterson, including the proviso language that is the same language we discussed for the previous amendment at the $1.5 million level. And apologies for some of the copy and paste errors.
No problem. Thank you very much. It has been moved to amend item 202 as described by the prime sponsor. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Councilmember Peterson, would you have anything else to add to your technical amendment here, or any additional clarifying comments? I see Central Staff is also on the line.
Thank you, Chairman Mosqueta. Just to add that what is being provisoed for the overtime is the 1.5 million, and that is all the overtime that's being restored here. So all of the overtime being restored here would be provisoed. The rationale for the additional overtime is I am assuming additional separations in an amount higher than what the mayor had proposed, and so the additional overtime should be needed to help offset those additional separations going from 94 to 106 separations. So that's the rationale for restoring some of that overtime. But what we do want to proviso that, I know that's very important, but I just wanted to clarify that regarding the overtime. But Greg's, Central Staff's description was excellent in terms of the difference between this and the previous amendment.
Okay. And Greg, did you have anything else you wanted to add? Okay. I do have a question for you, Councilmember Peterson. Is this amendment including an additional $400,000 for the community safety, community service officers for the CSOs? Is it assuming that that funding is needed? Okay. It completely does not include any funding for CSOs then. Okay. All right. Councilmembers, are there any additional comments or questions? Councilmember Strauss, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to be clear that I do support our hiring incentives program. I do support our CSOs. I do think that we need to change our attrition estimates to 94, not 114, and that we do need to have our overtime properly calibrated into the next year. It is clear to me that no matter how this budget pencils out, the SPD will have more dollars than they will likely be able to spend in a single year. And this will, in fact, set us up to have another underspend conversation in the middle of next year. And we need to be able to use those funds to provide for overtime and hiring incentives and many other things. This budget has many things, or this budget amendment has many things that I do like. It has some things that I don't like, and I know Councilmember Peterson and I had early conversations about how I wished we could have split it out by line items, and I made those comments earlier just in this meeting about how we have a number of amendments that get to this very similar proposal. And so it is clear, I want the record to just reflect that while I'm not going to be able to support this amendment today, there are many aspects of this amendment that I do support and that I would like to get us to a place to ensure that we have the appropriate dollars for SPD to be able to do their core functions and that we are able to ensure that they have not only the officers that they need, but that they're able to hire the officers that they need. And so just again, we have not made any cuts to the hiring plan, and I'm going to be voting to return the attrition estimates to what was sent down to us from the mayor. Just wanted to put those thoughts on the record. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. Councilmember Swant, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Mosqueta. Just actually mainly just wanted to clarify that I didn't miss anything. We still haven't voted on the technical amendment to the amendment. Am I right?
That's correct. We will be voting next on the technical amendment to the amendment, and then we'll consider the underlying.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Any additional comments or questions on the technical amendment to make the changes as noted by the sponsor? Hearing none, let's get this amendment in front of us. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on the adoption of the amendment to SPD 016A 0012022?
Peterson?
Yes.
Swant?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Chairman Mosqueta?
Yes.
Nine in favor and none opposed.
Okay, thank you. The motion carries, and that technical amendment to incorporate the verbal amendments has passed. Councilmember Peterson, you are now recognized if you'd like to speak to the underlying amendment in front of us.
Thank you, Chairman Mosqueta. I think, you know, you've offered so much time for us to discuss this, and I feel like I made my comments in the previous amendment, and Central Staff described this very well. So I think it's clear where we are on this amendment, so I don't have any additional comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Juarez, you are a co-sponsor here. Please go ahead. Apologies for not calling in earlier.
No, and thank you. I apologize, because you know what's been going on with my computer. So now I'm just going, I'm on the screen, everything's okay. I'm not, I'm supposed to be unmuted. First of all, Madam Chair, thank you that we are going back to the language of it is restoration, not a cut. So we cleared up all that confusion. And thank you, Greg, using some of your language that these are not cuts, but we're choosing to add back in. And again, thank you for your leadership, Madam Chair, for the CSOs. I'm going to be voting yes on number 202 for many reasons, but I don't want to go into all the specifics of what we've been dealing with, but I want to kind of go to the sensibilities of what has happened and what we have learned a lot of since the summer, fall 2020. And a lot of these things we have always known, but we're finally having an honest discussion about police and staffing, community policing, the consent decree, and race. So I really want to focus on my comments on moving forward and delivering concrete programs and concrete efforts to address what we have learned and what we need to incorporate in this budget. So I believe we have an opportunity, we've had an opportunity to hear from various committees, Public Safety, the Chief of Police, the Court Monitor, and other folks about what this new, reimagined, if you will, Police Department and policing and community policing means, the relational ship component of it. Big thank you to Councilmember Herbold and her setting up and working so hard on the Community Safety and Communications Center. Thank you, Councilmember Morales, for the participatory budgeting and also us working on the ECI, the Economic Community Initiative, to the tune of 30 million that we have invested in upstream community building programs, and we'll continue this. It's a work still in progress, which I think people don't always understand. I know that this whole council has always been mindful of, particularly Councilmember Gonzalez, who led us through this, of the consent decree, what we are legally bound to do, what our responsibilities are, and certainly what our responsibilities are under the Seattle City Charter. We now understand and can see the impacts on the last couple of years. Um, we now understand and can see the impacts, um, in the last couple of years, um, to less police officers and 911 calls, increase in gun violence, violence, crime, and all the other things that we hear about all the time from our constituents everywhere across this great city. And also, um, going back again, as I shared last week, talking about the letter that Chief Diaz wrote to all of us. And I think, again, the sentence that stuck out to me the most, that letter dated November 10th, is that we send the right people to the right calls, and that is what's been missing in community policing. Um, you're right, Count Madam Chair, that everyone doesn't need to be met with a gun and a badge. And I appreciate that, that, though, that type of, those type of values are now being translated into policy, and now we're having the discussion, discussion on how we pay for it. So I am, um, very supportive of this section of the, now that I think, what is it? Four point, is it even four point now? Because we are talking about a responsible restoration. And we have to be mindful that we are still in transition from, in the beginning, defund the police, uh, to redirect funds from SPD to community, and that we are in the process of creating and funding institutions that promote our goals and our values, that we do no harm, uh, that we protect and we serve our city and its residents. And I think that's, that's the point we're at. I think councilmember Lewis captured that, um, quite nicely, that this is a discussion that we have to have and we have to be open. And thank you for providing a safe space for us to have these discussions because they are difficult. Um, so we are at the process that, if you will, the threshold, um, to direct money to the right programs and again, to direct the right people, whether it's SPD, CSOs, the Hope Team, to the right calls. And that takes time. So, um, I am going to hearken back to also the letter that we received from Dr. Oftelli on November 8th. And one of the sentiments that stood out to me the most in, well, a lot did, but in particular to this, to what I'm speaking to now, is when he said, "Police reform and progress towards a more democratic and equitable police service requires investments in the system and infrastructure necessary to support that ideal." And so that's where I stand today in coming forward and promoting this and hoping my colleagues will vote yes. What I believe in this, um, responsible restoration is that we give grace, that we give time to, for us to change and grow. Um, SPD, community programs all need time to become a success. They're not going to happen overnight. And we all need time to heal. So again, as I was sharing, in, investing in upstream social programs, standing up the SC, SCC, we need the correct funding in the CL Police Department. And again, these programs, this change takes time to take root. So as we streamline the CL Police Department and fund much-needed community programs that we now value and know must become institutional in our city, we need to give the same grace to change and to grow. And so that is why I'm hoping that today my colleagues will settle on this compromise, uh, not the whole 10-point or the eight, but, um, right now with the, um, 4 million, now knowing that the CSOs are restored. And again, uh, thank you for your leadership and for listening, uh, Madam Chair. You listened to the community and the concerns people had about the CSOs. And, um, I just want to again say, um, I think you've done a really good job of focusing us and leading us through and setting out a format that allows us to have civil discourse and agree to disagree and know that, you know, there's another day to come to get where we're going, because I know that we're going in the right direction. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Juarez. Are there any additional comments or questions? Seeing no additional comments or questions, appreciate the comments very much, colleagues. Um, I do have to encourage us all to remember that we are not out of this crisis, but the pandemic has only worsened. We have seen growing income inequality, and the crisis of COVID has meant that we must preserve every dollar possible for that worsening scenario if we don't see businesses open as fast as we hope they will, if we see a continued, um, uh, change or approach in the type of variance that Delta, uh, that, um, COVID, um, is presenting. We have to be prepared for those worst-case scenarios. As the chart showed from central staff at the beginning of this presentation, we have not nearly begun to build back our reserves past the level, um, of, uh, support that we need to be at in order to be in a safe place for a future downturn. I would encourage us to remain vigilant and not take from the reserves. We need to have every investment possible at our fingertips so that those who need care for kiddos, care for elders, food assistance, shelter assistance, housing assistance, that we have thought through what are the worst-case scenarios. We have done a tremendous job in this proposed budget of investing in immediate needs right now. I propose to you that having additional dollars go to areas within the Seattle Police Department's budget, do not compare it to the type of needs that we may need to invest those dollars in in the future. Again, we are already putting 4.6 million dollars towards overtime, bringing that total to 26.4. We are already making sure that the, um, travel and training budget has near a million dollars in it, in a time of COVID when there's less travel happening. We have vigilantly looked at the actual data from attrition in past years to see what is a reasonable and frankly, conservative expectation of how many officers will leave next year. This is not to say that we want officers to leave when we have invested, uh, a hun- $750,000 into officer wellness and supervision to support retention. That is included in the budget. We have $218,000 to accelerate hiring, training for our sworn and civilian positions and to support recruitment. So we can do these things. We can try to work towards greater retention, but we should not be just looking at a piece of paper and changing the dollar amounts that, that, um, will have a dramatic effect on the reserves in front of us. 4 million dollars is still a significant amount of money, uh, that I would like to see retained in our emergency funds to make sure if there is a crisis, we're able to tap into those. You heard how excited I was that I was able to add another 400,000. I would very much like to preserve this 4 million dollars. So with that, colleagues, I am urging a no vote on this item and look forward to further conversations about how we can make sure that we're not in this cycle year over year with some amendments coming up. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the adoption of the amendment in front of us, item number 202? Peterson?
Yes.
Sawant?
No.
Strauss?
No.
Gonzalez?
No.
Herbald?
No.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
No.
Chair Mosketa?
No.
Three in favor, five opposed. Thank you, colleagues. The motion, uh, fails and the amendment is not adopted. We will move on to item number 205.
Right, that, that vote count was incorrect.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have.
It's, I, I apologize. It's actually three in favor and six opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Heard that, yes. Three in favor, six opposed is what my notes say as well. With that, the motion fails and the amendment is not adopted. Thank you, Council President. Uh, let's go to item number 203.
Okay, um, item number 203 is an amendment brought by, uh, councilmember Lewis, and that, this amendment would add 2.7 million back to SPD. This, uh, reverses, uh, all of the, uh, staffing, um, uh, cuts that, uh, or I'm sorry, reverses the separation assumptions that are made i- in, in the, um, council's, um, plan. It would takes the 2.7 million dollars that is, uh, reduced from the proposed budget with the assumption of the COVID separations and then also the, uh, additional separations to equal 125 and restores all of that so that there would be no COVID separations and there would be o- only the mayor's proposed plan of 94 separations and 125 hires and would restore the 2.7 million dollars accordingly.
All right, thank you, councilmember Lewis, you are recognized in order to move your amendment.
Thank you all. I'll be pretty brief on this one since this is kind of, uh, uh, like in the Russian dolls of these amendments, the, uh, the smallest Russian doll is, that's still there. Uh, this, um, proposal.
Councilmember, so sorry, do you mind moving the amendment first?
Oh, I'm, I'm so sorry, Councilmember Mosketa, it, it's, yeah, it's late. I, I do so move the amendment.
Okay, thank you very much. SPD 014A 001 has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. And councilmember Lewis, you are up to describe it as you wish.
Uh, okay, well, I'll stand, um, uh, by my previous, uh, analogy and, and move on to more substantive comments. So essentially what this would let us do is, is change the attritional assumption back to the, um, department's represented attritional assumption. We've talked a lot about this over the last couple of weeks. Um, the, the council balancing budget assumes 125 separations. The department is saying it'll be about 90-some. I think all of us acknowledge that both of those estimates are, 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 are fair depending on a particular point of view. I think there's an advantage to budgeting to an estimate that assumes less attrition, uh, just so that we plan for that contingency and are not in a position where we need to revisit in the middle of the year to adjust, to make sure that the hiring plan doesn't just stop at a certain point if it does come in lower. Um, I, I think that there's nothing for the council to lose in, in adapting this, uh, given that if the attrition is what we, what the council, um, thinks it will be in the balancing budget, then these reserves never get touched anyway. So it, uh, um, would essentially not touch the reserves in the case where the more, um, pessimistic attrition scenario was realized. So, I mean, that's the essential thinking behind this. I, I, I generally, um, going forward, would, would prefer the council not, uh, be in a position where we, um, will habitually predict that, uh, that, um, hiring and separations will be the same number. Um, that given that this will be the second cycle in a row where we're doing this. Again, I think it, it's certainly a respectable choice, given the inconsistency year to year in what the attrition number is. But, um, I, I would prefer to assume the more optimistic attrition number and then, um, if that's not realized, uh, the reserves won't be touched. So will be no worse for wear. Thank you.
Councilmember Herbald, please go ahead.
I didn't quite understand the description of the budget amendment. The budget amendment says it cuts, um, 2.7 million of the reserves. It doesn't say we might cut 2.7 million of the reserves if the, um, separations are, um, are different. So, uh, it, I don't, I don't see this sort of functioning as maybe a proviso might function if, if written that way, um, as the, um, sponsor described, but maybe I'm, I'm missing something here.
I don't think you are, Councilmember Herbald. It, it does cut 2.7 million from the reserves and, and then moves it to the, uh, moves it to the, uh, to the department budget. It, it might be that, uh, what the council member, councilmember Lewis is referring to is that the, uh, uh, there is a salary savings proviso on all salary savings in SPD, and if the money is not spent, then it's available to lapse at the end of the year and go back to reserves, but I'll, I'll let him speak to that.
No, Greg, thank you. You, you summarized, um, what I was implying perfectly. Uh, you know, that said, I mean, and I don't want to try to amend this on the fly, given the hour, uh, but there, you know, there will be other opportunities to discuss amendments. Uh, if there is interest in structuring something more explicitly along the lines of, um, of a, of a proviso like councilmember Herbald just, um, indicated, I'm happy to explore that offline, um, after today's meeting. Uh, but no, it, what I was basically alluding to, councilmember Herbald, would be that that 2.7 million would be captured by the savings proviso, and it could then be redistributed back into the stabilization fund when we, um, reapportion everything. But, um, but yes, I, I, I see how that could have been misleading, so I apologize for, uh, phrasing it the way I did.
No apologies necessary. I just, um, because I haven't said it for about a half an hour, I'm not voting in favor of anything that touches the reserves. So I just wanted to really make sure, um, that I understood this one correctly. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a similar message into, um, my team as well. Thank you for the clarification, councilmembers Herbald and councilmember Lewis. Um, colleagues, are there additional comments or questions on this item? Okay, I will offer a few additional comments, and councilmember, um, Lewis, appreciate the recognition of the good work that central staff has done to do what I believe are accurate and conservative estimates of what attrition would be. I would just offer up again, the information we were received from central staff, both in October and in the November memos that we've received. We know that this year we are on track to, um, uh, unfortunately see, um, a higher level of attrition than anticipated. Last year, we assumed 114 officers would potentially leave through attrition. We will probably see 150 officers, according to that latest data, leave through attrition. That is very similar to the number we experienced in 2020. I want to again reiterate the ways in which this council, even just in this mid-year supplemental, is trying to help to address retention issues as requested by the mayor's office. Those retention items were not only funded in the, uh, mid-year supplemental, they are included in this base budget, they have not been touched. We are going to continue to want to uplift the information so that it's very clear that we have, as the council president noted in her line of questioning earlier this year, an interest in what the department is doing from the managerial side to address retention. We have put forward funding to address that, but the numbers bear out a much higher level of attrition than what the mayor is suggesting. Assuming 94, um, officers will leave through attrition only is a very conservative estimate that quite literally leaves, that quite literally would have left dollars on the table that could go into medical mobile crisis unit lead program, um, the, uh, community safety initiative that we heard so much about from the folks who've been calling it, and so many other investments into food and safety, um, and housing and shelter. So those are the decisions that we made. I do, uh, want to make sure that we are very clear that 94 officers, it was a conservative assumption for attrition to begin with, but we also have near 80 officers who have not received the vaccine, who it's very likely are not going to have an accommodation be able to make because of the nature of that work. I know folks are working very hard right now to find accommodations for people who are not receiving the vaccine, but if an accommodation cannot be, um, provided for, assuming just that a dozen out of the 80 will not be able to continue on, is again a very conservative estimate. I very much appreciate, um, the work that you have done with us to try to identify ways to invest in some of the most critical issues, but for me, um, pulling from the reserves even in the more nuanced approach that you noted, um, does, does not square with the experience that we have in attrition, uh, in the city of Seattle over the last, uh, two years, and we will continue to work on retention strategies with the department, new chief and new mayor. With that, colleagues, I would encourage, uh, a no vote on this item so that we can continue to see a healthy reserve and, uh, look, we'll look forward to working with you all to keep our eye on those actual attrition levels with some of the other proviso language that has been, um, suggested. Councilmembers, any additional comments? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you please read? Will you please call the roll on the adoption of amendment SPD 014A 001? Peterson?
Yes.
Sawant?
No.
Strauss?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
No.
Herbald?
No.
Juarez?
No, I mean, I'm sorry, woo, yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Is that all?
Chair Mosketa?
Chair Mosketa? You're on mute, Chair Mosketa.
Thank you very much. Um, before you call the roll, Madam Clerk, I do just want to make sure that there, that anybody who has made a vote does not want to reconsider their vote. Okay, um, my vote is no, Madam Clerk.
Five in favor, four opposed.
Excuse me, um, excuse me. Uh, the, um, the motion carries and SPD 014A 001 is adopted. Um, we will go on to the next agenda item. Excuse me, before that's read into the record. Okay. Madam Clerk, you can go ahead and read, excuse me, um, councilmember, uh, council central staff, Grant Doss, you can go ahead.
I think, uh, I think, Madam Chair, you had asked that we go ahead and skip to the, uh, abrogation, um, action by councilmember Gonzalez and councilmember Mosketa?
You mean Morales, yes. Um, that is the next item on our agenda here. Um, 19- That is the next item on our agenda here, 199.
I apologize, it's too small for me to see. Okay, so I'm, the next item is SPD 012A001, and it would abrogate 101 police officer FTE and SPD to right-size the salary budget. We've had a lot of discussion here today about how the proposed budget came over with 134 vacant police officer positions that were funded and that these vacant police officer positions that were funded are over and above the hiring plan that the, that the executive submitted with the budget and that these vacant and funded positions, that the salary funding for them was redirected in the amount of, of 19 million, redirected to other places in the budget, all of the many investments that, that we have been talking about. And what this particular amendment is designed to do is to cut the vacant positions so that in future budgets, the executive can't send over a, a budget that has vacant positions that are funded with salary funding and then to redirect that salary funding to other, other priorities. And this, I think, also speaks to Chair, your, your principles about cutting versus ads. If, if it is the case that the vacant positions that are, are currently receiving salary funding and then that salary refunding is redirected, if that doesn't happen anymore, then it will be the case that, that the SPD budget will come forward with, with ads, the technology ads and the other ads will come forward as distinct ads. It, it won't be that they are, are paid for with salary funding from vacant positions and, and there won't be a lack of transparency there. So that, that is the thinking behind this particular amendment. It is not to in any way abrogate filled police officer positions. One last piece of background I will provide is that if you examine the SPD staffing plan through the, the upcoming year and through 2023, the highest point that you will see in terms of having a need for sworn officers, the highest point is 1,1256 officers. And that is the point, that, that is the number of officers or FTE that are, are left after 101 are abrogated. And so this action can happen and not affect the SPD staffing plans for the next two years. The only qualification I would make is if all of a sudden a police agency somewhere shut down and there were, say, 50 officers available to sign up in the middle of next year or in the middle of, probably more likely in the middle of the second year, the council may have to take some action. But under the normal hiring plans of 125 next year and 125 the year after, the, the, there is, there is, there should not be a need for the 101 positions. And so that's, that's, that's my summary.
Thank you, Greg. Council President, I appreciate you bringing this amendment forward. Council President, would you like to move adoption of this amendment?
I would, thank you, Madam Chair. I move for adoption of SPD 012A001.
Second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded. Go ahead, please, Council President.
Thank you so much. My comments unfortunately are a little bit longer on this one than I had originally intended, so I appreciate the grace from my colleagues to give slightly longer comments. I've been pretty quiet the entire project committee process, so hopefully, hopefully this is acceptable. So colleagues, when I was first preparing my comments to accurately describe this reasonable council budget action, as I mentioned, I intended to make my comments pretty cut and dry. However, at 2:18 PM today, the interim chief of police issued to the media and the general public a statement that grossly mischaracterizes the intent and effect of this proposed amendment. He did so without any outreach or communication with me or my office in advance, though he directly references my amendment and only my amendment in his statement, in spite of the fact that there are several other SPD amendments in today's votes. I'm deeply disappointed in that tactic and find it disrespectful. Be that as it may, let me put the fear mongering aside and misrepresentation of facts to bed. Interim Chief Diaz, in his statement, wrote, quote, "That the council president's amendment would permanently eliminate another 101 officers. This would greatly jeopardize the safety of our communities and have long-term impacts on investigating violent crimes and caring for our most vulnerable," close quote. Again, either this is a gross and intentional misrepresentation, or it is a gross misunderstanding of the proposed amendment. So I'd like to take an opportunity to deconstruct that statement in the context of what is actually included in this proposed council budget action. First, there is an inference in the interim chief's statement that the revised and actually balanced budget eliminates officers and that my proposed amendment would eliminate even more officers. This is inaccurate. This budget fully funds SPD's sworn staff hiring plan and nothing in this budget or in my amendment proposes firing, laying off, or otherwise eliminating funded and filled sworn officer positions. This is why it is incomprehensible to me as to why the interim chief would represent otherwise. Second, the interim chief implies via his statement that this budget action would result in the firing, elimination, or laying off of exactly 101 officers from the current police force. Again, this is just not true. This budget action would not impact the Seattle Police Department's 2022 staffing plan as just described by Greg Doss, our independent Council Central Staff Policy Analyst, budget or operations in any way. Why wouldn't it create any impact? Because SPD's budget includes funding for 134 sworn officers above and beyond its already fully funded hiring plan. To put it simply, SPD admits that they cannot and are not planning to hire these additional 134 sworn officers in 2022. So let me repeat that. SPD admits that they cannot and are not planning to hire these additional 134 sworn officers in 2022. So unlike any other department in the city of Seattle, Seattle Police Department expects the council to look away and allow the department to perpetuate the budget assumptions that result in every single year, the council being saddled with the responsibility of unwinding the police department's opaque and non-transparent budget. For the last two years, most members, not all, but most members of this council have committed to the principle of budget accountability for this police department and all other departments. I believe voting in favor of this budget action is in line with those budget accountability principles and hope that a majority of you will agree with me today. As I noted in the last week's committee deliberations on this issue, I am reasonable and realistic and agree that the department does need some wiggle room, which is why my budget action does not abrogate all 134 positions. But the interim chief is not asking the council for wiggle room or a reasonable level of discretionary funding. He is apparently demanding a blank check and zero fiscal accountability or scrutiny. The council should reject his demand. At its core, my budget amendment is simply an effort to align the department's budget with the actual size of the force over the next several years. This revised position count would provide a buffer well above the SPD's own optimistic staffing projections, which by virtue of the last vote, has just been made even more optimistic. With this council budget action, the Seattle Police Department continues to retain authority to hire the 1,256 full-time equivalents that the interim chief indicated he could hire in 2022. And the Seattle Police Department has indicated that the department would not need additional position authority above the 1,256 full-time equivalents proposed with this amendment until the 2024 calendar year at the earliest. I believe that this council budget action is an important cleanup action, good governance, and sound fiscal policy. The passage of this council bill will ensure that the council is right sizing the department's budget in future years, starting with the 2023 proposed budget, which should be built based on the funds needed to support its actual, not hypothetical, but actual staffing numbers and shouldn't include funding for over 100 vacant positions that the Seattle Police Department has unequivocally stated it cannot and will not be able to fill in 2022. And I want to reflect on the fact that the police department is asking us to shelve these dollars for these positions that are not and cannot be filled in the context of a public health epidemic of, of, of one kind for this entire century. If the Seattle Police Department believed that they could indeed fill these 101 vacant and funded positions, but unfilled, again, unfilled positions, I trust that they would have included the entire 101, if not 134 positions in their staffing hiring plan, but they did not. So colleagues, I want to urge you to vote yes on SPD 012A001. And I appreciate, Madam Chair, you giving me an opportunity to spend a little extra time than I would ordinarily spend to describe and make my case for adoption of this amendment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Council President. I really want to thank you for all of the work that you have done to provide clarity on what this amendment actually is related to 134 vacant positions that the chief, the mayor, and the council agrees and have discussed will not and cannot, and that they are not planning to fill. These are separate from the 125 that both the council and the mayor's proposed budget agrees we will attempt to fill, fully funding the hiring plan. I know that this is a point of confusion for members of the community, so Council President, what you have just offered today is tremendous clarity, along with Central Staff, to ensure that folks truly understand these are not related to any existing positions. These are vacant and were planned to be vacant. One-time money is currently rolling over year over year for these vacant positions. So appreciate the clarity you've offered here. And I'll save some comments towards the end. Chair Herbold, please go ahead.
Thank you. So I guess the comments I want to, I want to share are not intended in any way to continue to spin an inaccurate narrative. I recognize the points that Council President Gonzalez has made about what it would mean to abrogate these funds and, and, or these positions and what it wouldn't mean. Again, these are, these are vacant positions. The council has removed funding from many of the vacant positions. And appreciate her clarification that it, that voting in favor of this action has no impact whatsoever on the department's ability to hire in a way that is consistent with its staffing plan. I, I'm, I am also frustrated with some of the rhetoric coming out of the executive departments and the police department. I think another, another point of, of contention that I have with the statement that I see Diaz put out, he refers to the loss of 325 officers as a result of retirements, resignation, and cuts. That is not true. We have not cut any of the 325 officers who have left the department. All of that said, as safety chair, I, I feel that I have a responsibility to do everything I can to make sure that people understand what the true action, the true impact of our actions are and also to do whatever I can to not encourage additional confusion or efforts to mislead the, the position of council as it relates to the police department's budget. And I think, and I'm not saying that at all that this is the intention of the sponsor, but I am concerned that the budget action, whereas I don't, I absolutely don't agree the way it's been characterized by, by Chief Diaz, I'm concerned that it does send a message that the council believes that the right number of officers, the department, is 1,256 officers. I, for that reason, I, I really am very concerned that supporting this at this, this time would send that message to the public. And we have to recognize that I think our goals for standing up non-policing crisis response have not been realized this year. It's not for, for lack of trying. We have seen the successful 2021 expansion of Health One. We may not see the second expansion this year. I'm hoping we will, but part of the reason for that is because of the loss of positions in the Seattle Fire Department that would make it possible to do the second expansion. We have also successfully expanded the mobile crisis teams in the CSO expansion. But I think those, those non-crisis response that, responses that we have been able to bring to, bring to bear this year are, are at a level that is sort of commensurate with the budget action that we took in June, or what we began discussing, I should say, in June of 2020 and finalized in, in August of 2020. And that was, at that point, a goal of a reduction of 100 officers for the police department. And, you know, again, with, with the loss of police officers voluntarily leaving the department, we are well beyond that, that reduction of 100 officers. We're now at a reduction of, of over 300, well, there's been 300, over 300 separations. The, the size of the department is, has been reduced, I believe, by about 280. But nevertheless, I just don't want to send the message inadvertently without having more time to really explain what this budget action would do. I don't want to send the message that we have come to the conclusion that 256 officers is the right size for the department. There's a clear opportunity, I believe, for the new administration coming into office in 2022 to work with us here on the council to provide clear, accurate information to the public. And I, I very much look forward to turning the leaf to ensure that that happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Morales, please go ahead.
Thank you. So I, I think Council President Gonzalez did a great job of explaining the whole issue that we heard from Central Staff earlier this, in the week about the 134 funded positions that are vacant in excess of the proposed funded hiring plan. What I really want to talk about is the, the matter of the opportunity cost for us as a city. The reason I'm co-sponsoring this amendment is because of all of the needs that could be funded. Instead of funding 101 positions that SPD will not be able to fill this year, and remind us that the reason we had salary savings to capture for 2021 because there were funded pockets that sat vacant last year. This is really, as the council president said, a good governance issue. It's an issue of transparency. If we choose to allow the practice of funding at an extraordinary level for vacant positions that can't be filled, we are effectively allowing an artificial expansion of the department's budget, and this is something that the council has been doing for years now. We don't do this with other departments. And so, you know, I, I, it's not, not clear to me why we keep doing it with this one, but the net effect is that we have a reduced general fund for all, all of our other city priorities. And that has always been my point of view on this particular issue of trying to reduce the size of the force, is that we really need to think about is that we really need to think about finding the scarce public resources to fund the really critical services that we have in the city. And now, especially after COVID, that is even more acute of an issue. You know, with the 19, this, the 134 positions, I think central staff said would be about $19 million. This is funding, abrogating 101 positions, still leaving 33 funded. But with that $19 million, we could fund 57 units of permanent supportive housing. We could fund 100 home zones. We could fund 190 new street outreach workers. These are the issues that we keep hearing from the public about. And we don't have the resources to, to scale up all of that work that needs to happen. We could fund forgiveness for back rent accrued during the pandemic for 3,400 families. We could fund nearly five transitional housing sites, like the one I just proposed for the Chief Seattle Club that didn't get funded because we don't have the money. With $19 million, we could have fully funded my original amendments for youth pre-employment funding, after-school programming for middle and high school students, community restorative justice programming, programming for Black girls and trans youth, a social housing acquisition management program, and still fund another six public toilets. So this is the issue for me. We have a department that is bloated and has been for a while. And we have incredible needs in our community. This is just the list from my district. You know, I'm sure that each of my colleagues could quickly write a list of $19 million worth of investments that their district could really benefit from. So however you want to couch it, when we talk about community safety or public safety, we have to be talking about the balance and how we allocate our scarce public dollars to meet the needs in our community. We made some adjustments to the Police Department budget, to staffing. We funded CSOs. We're doing other important work to try to improve community safety. And we could continue to invest in upstream solutions. So I, I, I know this isn't going to be the end of this conversation. We will be talking about this particular issue, my guess is, for several years to come. I want to encourage my colleagues not to think about this as some hot potato political issue and really think about the kind of investments in our community that we could be making by shifting funding from a criminal legal system that doesn't serve our Black and Brown neighbors to more upstream prevention services and really start to change the material conditions that our neighbors are living in. So I am proud to be a co-sponsor of this, and I look forward to voting yes.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Morales, and thanks for your co-sponsorship. I'm sorry, I didn't call on you earlier and acknowledge that as well. Council colleagues, are there any additional comments or questions? Councilmember Peterson, please go ahead.
Hey, Chair Mosqueta. I had a question for central staff. How often does SPD update their staffing plan and their hiring plan?
The department does it internally about once a month. They send it over quarterly according to the slide that SPD has, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Herbold has requested, SPD 001. And so the council will receive quarterly presentations. They send it over informally more often, and I keep track of it.
Okay. Thank you. I just, we do have an incoming administration, and so there'll be additional staffing plans and hiring plans that'll be revised. So it sounds like we really don't know exactly what the situation will be several months from now. So I, I just, colleagues, rather than cutting the currently vacant positions, I, I would urge us to instead focus on expanding reforms by revamping the police union contract, a contract which expired over a year ago. As we know, the police union contract governs financial issues such as premium pay and the definition of overtime. And a better contract can also substantially strengthen accountability. So I believe revamping the contract that has expired continues to be the best path for us to work together with the mayor's office and our accountability partners to make meaningful and durable progress. So I'll be voting no on this amendment to cut positions, and I strongly urge my colleagues to vote no as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see another hand, so I'm going to offer some comments and then allow for the council president to have the final closing comments here. These are not positions that are funded. These are not cuts to sworn officers. These are, this is an amendment that recognizes that there is 134 vacant positions that every year rolls back into the mayor's budget, that every year allows for them to have nearly $20 million to make decisions about where those dollars should go within SPD without accurately recognizing that those dollars should go to the general fund for an informed conversation about how they could be future, allocated in the future. If the mayor wanted to, in this year, have put that $17.7 million into general fund and then had suggested in her proposed budget the ways in which to use it to go back into SPD, at least it would have been more transparent. But it is not transparent, not when every year these positions that are vacant continue to roll over year over year. And that leaves us with the inability to have a transparent conversation with the community about how much money is actually going into salaries and officers. It is not accurate to say that these 134 positions are for officers. These are vacant positions. Again, as central staff, our independent, nonpartisan central staff have reiterated time and time again that both the mayor, the chief, and council all acknowledge are not attempting to be hired this year. They weren't last year. And every year, those dollars will continue to roll over unless we abrogate these positions. I very much support the amendment offered by Council President Gonzalez and Councilmember Morales. I support it because I think it's a good budgeting matter. I support it because it also includes a cushion just in case, by some stretch of the imagination, the Seattle Police Department is able to hit the 125 hiring goal that they have. They still have over 30 positions that they would then be able to continue to hire for. It is not abrogating every single one of those positions. It is acknowledging that year over year, we shouldn't be in this position. I do not want to have this council, time and time again, have to be subject to fear mongering and brow beating when the reality is those $17.7 million should not have been allocated out to the programs that the mayor had wanted to without a transparent conversation first and having those dollars reflected in the general fund. Regardless of your position on various policies as it affects policing, it is a good budgeting practice to make sure that every department does not have an inflated dollar amount tied to positions year over year when we know those positions are not going to be funded. We know those positions are not going to be filled, is what I meant to say. And yet, they are funded. That doesn't make any sense. Why would we continue to allow for these positions to stay on the books to receive funding when we know they are not going to be filled? Again, we are including every single dollar that the mayor's office, that the chief has asked for, for the hiring plan that the Police Department has asked for. 125 officers was the full hiring plan that they requested. 125 officers is the full hiring plan that is included in this proposed budget. It does not make sense to have any future council, any future budget committee, to have to deal with this type of level of inflation, inflated, artificially inflated salaries when it could actually be more appropriately and accurately reflected in the general fund. I appreciate that there's conversations about wanting to support officer retention, mental health and well-being, to send a strong message that we're all trying to work on this appropriate scaling up of community investments as we seek to remove officers who are responding to homelessness crises, crises, and mental health crises, and folks who just need access to shelter and services. That, those are policy conversations that I think will continue and should continue. This amendment is related to an inflated budget tactic that puts council in the defensive position every year, and it obfuscates what should be clear to members of the public when it relates to our budgeting practices. Colleagues, I very much encourage you to support this, regardless of your position on policy differences that we may have had in the past. This is absolutely an important tool for transparent and accountable budgeting matter. And I want to make sure that we have greater clarity going into next year's 2023 budgeting. This will absolutely help that so that we are not in this situation time and time again, and we're not subject to misinformation and fear mongering. Thank you, Council President, Councilmember Morales, for bringing this forward. I'm going to call on Councilmember Swan, and then we'll see if there's any additional hands.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. I will be supporting this amendment. And also, I wasn't sure where to raise this point, so I'll just raise it here that I will probably have to leave after this vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for an opportunity to provide some brief closing remarks in, in response to some of the debate here. You know, I, I think, I want to make really clear that this proposed budget action is not about whether we, as a council, believe that 1,256 is the right number of officers and the right size for the Police Department. This, this, this is really a question about whether or not it is appropriate for a department, whether it's the Police Department or any other department in the city, to build their base budget on an assumption that is simply not true and wholly inflated. That's the case for the Seattle Police Department. Every year, we get a budget that builds their financial picture around a, a unrealistic, unreasonable number of funded but vacant positions. And I think that that's inappropriate, and we should correct for that. In doing so, that does not prevent growth from occurring at the Seattle Police Department. There is, in fact, nothing in this budget or in my proposed amendment that prevents unexpected growth at the Police Department. Indeed, it is part of the reason why I only chose to put forward an amendment that would reduce or abrogate the funded but vacant positions from 134 to 101. So let's do the math really quickly. Allowing for reasonable growth is 125 positions plus the 33 that continue to remain for a total of 158 potential positions to be hired next year in 2022. The, the, the alternative, if we reject this proposal, is that we will have a budget that indicates that, that the Police Department can hire 125 police officers, which we have funded, plus an additional 134 positions for a total of 259. Even in the most optimistic scenarios, the Seattle Police Department never in its history of existence has hired 259 officers in a single year or in a combination of two or three years. So again, I appreciate that the next council will have to have conversations about ongoing growth, about an accurate number of, of hires versus attrition. And, and that is an important policy conversation for the council to have. But I, I, right now, want to make sure that we re-center the conversation, not on that policy question, which is not being decided through this budget action, but on whether it's appropriate for any administration, current or past or future, to send this city council a budget that builds a budget for a department around numbers that they know are inflated, untrue, unrealistic, and unachievable. And so I hope that you all will agree that that should not be the practice in terms of how to build a budget and that you also see that I understand that there is a need to have that policy conversation around future growth and that nothing in this budget amendment or in any aspect of this budget ties the hands of this council or the future mayor to have that important policy conversation about the right formula to identify the number of police officers that will be necessary at the Seattle Police Department to continue to deliver public safety services while the city stands up alternatives to law enforcement approaches. So I appreciate, Madam Chair, an opportunity to engage in this respectful debate and dialogue, and once again, encourage my colleagues to vote yes on, on this particular budget action.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I'm not seeing any additional hands. Madam Clerk, I'd like to ask you to call the roll, please. If you could, please call the roll on the adoption of SPD 012 A 001 as listed on the agenda, Agenda Item 199.
Peterson?
No.
Swan?
Yes.
Strauss?
No.
Gonzalez?
S.
Herbold?
No.
Juarez?
No.
Lewis?
No.
Morales?
Yes.
Chair Mosqueta?
Yes.
Four in favor? Five opposed?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries and the amendment is, excuse me. The motion fails and the amendment is not adopted. Okay. Councilmember Morales, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to apologize. I've got, you know, attention-seeking, pesky kids around here. And so I need to move to reconsider the vote on SPD 14 A 001 2022.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Morales. It's been moved, is there a second? I will second that. It's been moved and seconded to reconsider the vote on SPD 014 A 001-2022. Are there any additional comments? Or, excuse me, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any additional comments on the motion to reconsider?
I'm sorry, can I have a clarification? What are we, what are we doing? Where, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Juarez. Councilmember Morales, I'm assuming voting on the prevailing side of Amendment 203 is motioning for reconsideration so that she can consider her vote.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. We're going back to 203.
Thank you, Councilmember Juarez. I'm sorry, I should have clarified that for the viewing public as well. Councilmember Morales, did you have anything else you'd like to add to your motion?
No, thank you. I just did want to clarify, this is Item D3 on the chart that is on the screen before us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we are going to first vote for a motion for reconsideration, and then we will vote on the item in front of us again. The motion carries, excuse me. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on reconsideration of SPD 014 A 001-2022?
Peterson?
Okay, excuse me. If there's, if there's procedural questions, let me handle those first, Madam Clerk. The motion for reconsideration would be to allow for reconsideration, allowing a council member who voted on the prevailing side to reconsider his or her vote, his or her, their vote. So Councilmember Morales, voting on the prevailing side, is asking for reconsideration of the vote. If that is successful, we will reconsider the vote on the initial conversation we just had on Amendment 203. Councilmember Peterson, clarifying question?
I think you answered it, Chair Mosqueta, that a vote, a yes, is allowing the reconsideration. Okay.
That's correct. Thank you very much. And I see central staff nodding. Parliamentary procedure at 6:30 at night. We, we got this. So yes, a vote, a vote yes is to affirm that you, you will allow for the council member to have her motion carry for reconsidering their vote. And then we will all vote again. Okay. Seeing no additional questions. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the reconsideration of adoption, excuse me, reconsideration for SPD 014 A 001-2022?
Peterson?
Stane.
Swan?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
No.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
S.
Chair Mosqueta?
Yes.
Seven in favor, one abstention, one opposed. Seven in favor, one abstention, one opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion carries and the vote on reconsideration carries. The motion is now in front of us for reconsidering the vote on SPD 014A001. Colleagues, this again puts this bill in front of us for your vote here today and all of the previous comments that we discussed and deliberated still apply to the bill. Nothing has changed to it. So would ask if anybody has any additional comments or questions before we consider the motion. Please go ahead, Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. So at this point, a yes vote is voting yes in favor of Councilmember Lewis's amendment?
A yes vote is affirming that you would like to see SPD 014A001 included as a passed amendment. A no vote means you do not support the amendment and you would not like to see it included. So yes supports the underlying amendment, which is Amendment Number 203. A no means you do not like the amendment. We're back to the basics here. Okay, great. Any additional clarifying questions? Okay. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on the approval of Amendment SPD 014A001-2022?
Peterson?
Yes.
Sawant?
No.
Strauss?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
No.
Herbold?
No.
Juarez?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
No.
Chair Mosqueta?
No.
Four in favor? Five opposed?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion fails and Amendment SPD 014A001, Item Number 203 on our agenda, does not pass. Okay. Colleagues, thank you for that procedural update. Councilmember Morales, thank you for flagging your hand. I believe we are now on Number 198. Colleagues, we have three more. It is 6:30. I want to really give you your full day tomorrow. I apologize for going late into the evening tonight. Three more amendments. I think we can do this. Councilmembers, in front of us is S dot 01, excuse me, S dot 107A001. Is that correct, Calvin?
That's correct. It's Item 198 on the agenda. It was discussed but not acted upon earlier this afternoon. It would cut 2.4 million of general fund for the Center City Streetcar. I believe there was discussion of a potential amendment to change the funding source for the items that would be funded by this proposal. That was not acted as well.
Thank you. It was moved and seconded. So the amended version is in front of us, but that is what is up for discussion so that we can potentially act on that amended version, if I am correct.
Chair Mosqueta, I believe the motion to amend the CBA was moved and seconded, but the vote on the motion was not made. So you still have to vote on that motion and then decide which. Yeah, based on that, it will depend which ones before you.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmembers, I believe Councilmember Herbold, you were the underlying sponsor here. We do have a motion that has been seconded to amend that. Just to orient us, though, Councilmember Herbold, would you like to speak to the underlying bill before we talk more about that amendment that received a second?
Hmm. That's an interesting question. Reason why I'm pausing is obviously I support the underlying amendment before the amendment, to the amendment. And so I'm happy to describe it. But again, as it relates to the funding source, I do not support. I'm going to speak really strongly to the use of funds, but I don't support the source of funds on the matter that is before us to vote on, which is the amendment to the amendment. Just to restate what I've said before, I strongly support a citywide hiring bonus program as described in the slide that's in the balancing package. Request the report on a citywide hiring incentive program with a report analyzing vacancy issues across all departments, focusing on frontline workers, focusing on vacancies that result in a service issue with the public or vacancies that inhibit a department from fulfilling a core function, and looking for recommendations on the strategies to address these difficulties in hiring, including but not limited to hiring bonuses. And, you know, it's been really important to me in having a conversation about a bonus program that we do not elevate the importance of some city workers over that of other city workers in other departments. I am, every time I talk to a department head, I hear about the vacancy issues that they're experiencing and I have, on a sort of ongoing basis, joked whether or not, oh, well, you need a bonus program to address those. And that goes from the investigators that are working in the OIG's office to the folks who are, the positions that we're adding to deal with some of the financial issues of the Human Services Department. Everybody is sort of joking, do you know anybody who would fill these positions? Because these vacancy and recruitment problems are across all departments. You know, I've talked before about the vacancy issues within the Parks Department and the struggles that they're having as well. And again, I think with a more comprehensive analysis of these vacancy issues, we could have an equitable program to incentivize folks to become public servants and come work for the city of Seattle. But I do believe that we don't just need the analysis, but we also need the funding for that in 2022, which is not currently available. Have you to move to vote?
Thank you very much, Councilmember Herbold. Councilmember Strauss, as the sponsor of the amendment that received a second, we are now back to you for talking about that amendment.
Thank you, Chair. Like Councilmember Herbold just said, this is a great amendment. It provides hiring incentives to get our community centers open and our cops hired. Literally, from community centers to cops, this covers every city department that we have to get. If you were wondering why we didn't have the pools open this last summer or over the winter, it's because we haven't been able to hire lifeguards. Why some beaches haven't been closed, same reason. The community centers are still closed because we can't hire enough people. We see this as a problem across the board. Almost identical to what Councilmember Herbold said, I also, the funding source is the issue for me. And so, colleagues, I think there's universal support for the funding outcome of this amendment. The question that we're having is, how do we fund it? And so, Chair, I would, I would hope that if both my amendment and Councilmember Herbold's amendment fails today that we have another opportunity to take this up before Monday with a more appropriate funding source from all of our perspectives. So this is an incredibly important amendment. I think that using streetcar funding to essentially kill a program isn't the best way to do this. I don't think that the Revenue Stabilization Fund is the best place to do this either, but that's what we have at this time. So that's why I bring this forward.
Okay, are there any additional comments or questions on the amendment in front of us? Um, Councilmember Strauss, or perhaps for Calvin, so this does dip into the Revenue Stabilization Account. It cuts $2.4 million from the Revenue Stabilization Account. Correct? The title here is accurate now.
If the council approves the motion to make the amendment, then that would, that would change, that would change the proposal in front of you to dip into the Revenue Stabilization Account.
Okay. For the purposes of the amendment that's in front of us, colleagues, it has been moved and seconded. I don't see any additional hands. I will encourage folks to vote against this amendment. I am continuing to raise concerns as I will through the end of the year about the use of any of the emergency funds that we need on reserve, whether that's our Revenue Stabilization Account, whether it's the emergency funds. We need to make sure that we have all dollars available for those rainy days that may come. I will also note, I have concerns as well about the use of the original proposed fund source, but let's deal with the amendment in front of us. And Madam Clerk, I will ask you to call the roll on the amendment to S dot 107A001 as presented on the screen and summarize by Councilmember Strauss.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sawant? Strauss? Thank you. Strauss?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
No.
Herbold?
No.
Juarez?
No.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
No.
Chair Mosqueta?
No.
Three in favor? Five opposed?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The motion fails and the amendment is not adopted. That brings us to the underlying amendment that was originally included in Item Number 198. Councilmember Herbold, would you like to add anything else to your summary of the description of the amendment in front of us? Seeing no comments there. Any additional comments from folks?
No.
Okay, okay, councilmembers, thank you. I, Councilmember Herbold, I will say some things that are probably not a surprise, given my interest in protecting this fund source as well. I want to make sure that we are not redirecting the use of the TNC tax for this purpose. I don't believe that this was in line with what it was negotiated for. I know you are a huge supporter of that original proposed legislation as well. You may have been the sponsor. I want to make sure that we continue to keep our commitments to the spend plan for the TNC tax, which was intended to be used for Worker Dispute Resolution Center, administering the tax, transportation, and housing projects such as transit-oriented development and mobility investments designed to help move away from reliance on single occupancy vehicles and support transit use. I also want to make sure that we continue our conversation about the city streetcar. I think it is an important project that unfortunately has had some holds on it, but we need to continue to create multimodal transportation options across the city. And really importantly, I want to make sure that we're maintaining our commitments to those workers that are going to continue to rely upon that funding source. We have heard some concerns from our friends at Teamsters 117, for example, who sent a joint letter with other community partners. And in recognition of those concerns, I will be a no on this amendment today. Councilmember Herbold, please go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't intend to speak. I just, I feel very strongly, I need to make a clarification. This does not touch any of the funds other than the funds that are recommended for the streetcar, the Center City Connector study for 2022. It does not touch any of the other funds contemplated to be used as part of the TNC revenue.
I apologize for that, Councilmember Herbold. Thank you for correcting the record there. In a week, in a week and a half, filled with misunderstandings or misinformation. I appreciate being corrected on that. I don't want that to linger out there. So thank you for that correction. And we will pass that on to folks who have raised concerns as well. Councilmember Peterson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. And in addition to what Councilmember Herbold had just said, the $400,000 investment would be transportation-related to help kids get to school. So, and again, both of these are one-time investments. It's something that, you know, the Center City Connector, that particular need could be revisited at a future date. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any additional comments or questions? All right. I'm not seeing any. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on the adoption of S dot 107A001?
Peterson?
Yes.
Strauss? Councilmember Strauss?
No. Apologies.
Gonzalez?
No.
Herbold?
Yes.
Juarez?
No.
Lewis?
No.
Morales?
No.
Chair Mosqueta?
No.
Two in favor? Six opposed?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion fails. The amendment is not adopted. We do have two more. We are going to continue in the S dot vein. Central Staff, let's go to Item Number 204.
Item 204 is S dot 12A1. This would add $500,000 of general fund to S dot for a waterfront shuttle's transit service, and it would cut $500,000 of general fund contribution to the Revenue Stabilization Fund. It's offered by Councilmember Lewis.
Councilmember Lewis, please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm going to be really brief, given the advanced hour. This is a late-breaking item in our budget cycle due to an ad from King County that came in later on their side, putting aside half a million dollars to operate this waterfront shuttle. I brought this amendment in the spirit of matching it in order to effectuate the service. Just as a very brief reminder, this service that existed back in 2019 provided rides for over half a million riders in 2019 to points between Pioneer Square, the waterfront, and Seattle Center and King Street Station, serving both visitors and Seattle residents alike as a free waterfront shuttle service to those points of interest in the Center City. This is an important asset, I think, for 2022, given that we continue to see an increase in visitors to the region for leisure travel while business travel continues to lag due to the delay in reopening. Leisure travel continues to recover, and this is an important asset for that. Also an important asset generally for downtown recovery and Center City recovery, given that it does provide an ability to get around for locals who live in the city core as well. Again, there's half a million dollars from King County that's on the table here to realize this. I know, again, that unfortunately, this is something that's proposing to dip into the stabilization account due to me not wanting to step on the toes of someone else's ad necessarily. But putting it in here to see if we can make sure we can effectuate that partnership with the county and restore an important service. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments or questions? Okay. Um, again, Councilmember Peters, excuse me, Councilmember Lewis, I appreciate all of the work that you're talking about in partnership with King County and really, this is less about the policy concerns here and more about the continuing use of the Revenue Stabilization Account. So for me, right now, I will be a no and encourage folks to continue good vigilance over that stabilization account at this point. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on S dot 012A001?
Peterson?
No.
Strauss?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
No.
Herbold?
No.
Juarez?
No.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
No.
Chair Mosqueta?
No.
Two in favor, six opposed.
Thank you very much. The motion fails and the amendment is not adopted. Colleagues, we're at the last one. Yay. Okay, we can do this. I see Lisa Kay on the screen. Let's do it. Councilmembers, excuse me, Lewis, let's go back to you and you can lead us out of this meeting.
Thank you so much, Chair Mosqueta. So this last one's pretty simple. This is bringing back the proposal to expand the auditor's office in a in a slightly scaled-down form from what I proposed earlier in the budget cycle. I do strongly feel that this would be an appropriate item to dip into the reserves for, for two reasons. One, the relatively modest amount of the ad relative to some of the other things we've discussed this evening. And second, because I do think there's a very strong case to be made that the auditor's office, in a certain sense, pays for itself and recoups value that does get realized in our budget cycles through the work that they do to scrutinize management practices and spending practices in executive departments. We did see a recent article detailing $800,000 of losses in Mary's Place, for example, that seems to have been done because of some kind of business management practice in FAS that would be something an audit, performance audit could potentially detect. So I do think the ability to have a well-resourced and expanded footprint in the auditor's office to be able to do a higher volume of performance audits would recoup value in excess of this $362,000. And for that reason, I think that this would be warranted as something that comes out of the stabilization fund to do this ad and then seek ongoing funding sometime in 2022 to continue the process of strengthening this really critical oversight asset that we have in our legislative branch.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Herbold. Please go ahead.
Thank you. If there was any item that I would break my, my attempt at discipline over not dipping into the reserves, this would be the one I'd make the exception on. I, it worked with Councilmember Lewis in an earlier stage of the budget deliberations to highlight a product, a project of the city auditor's office that was a high priority for me. It was not an audit itself. It was the, sort of the facilitation of a self-assessment of the city's police accountability agencies working with SOCR to identify a group of folks with lived experiences to participate in that self-assessment and in the hopes that that would lay the groundwork for potentially the city auditor contracting with an outside entity to do a more complete assessment. That said, I am going to sort of stick to my guns here because I just know that as soon as one exception is made, then another exception can be made, even though that we're at the end of our list here, almost, almost. There's always a full council vote, and I just don't want to do anything that might encourage my colleagues to take another bite at the revenues. I do want to address one of the things that Councilmember Lewis said about performance audits. For the record, I don't believe a performance audit would in any way have revealed the fraudulent automatic payment practices that resulted in the lack of city funding going to Mary's Place. Again, that was a result of a request for automatic payments. That was a fraudulent request. There are improved practices, financial practices, and some of them are supported by this budget that we are funding HSD from that are going to ensure that that never happens again. But I do not believe that this is something that a performance audit would be able to flag in advance. I do believe that it's important that the city tighten up its procedures for how it authorizes the automatic payments when that is requested by a contractor. But just want to sort of make that statement for the record to just ensure that there isn't confusion by the viewing public or by the press on what a no vote means. A no vote on this does not mean that we are, we are supporting continued practices that can expose the city to fraud like we saw with Mary's Place. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold. Councilmember Peterson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Mosqueta. I appreciate Councilmember Lewis bringing this forward. I think it is in our best interest to beef up the city auditor's office. It's obviously within the legislative department and it enables us to expand our bandwidth to perform oversight and to do deep dives on things and ends up saving money or pointing out issues that can save money. So I'll be supporting this, and if for some reason it doesn't pass, I hope that we do keep the city auditor top of mind with a mid-year supplemental. Thanks.
Great point. Thank you very much, Councilmember Peterson. And I too am torn on this for the very reasons that Councilmember Herbold is, to be consistent as well. I will be voting no on this, but appreciate the call for action in 2022, especially if there's additional underspend and additional opportunities to work with the auditor. Really appreciate their work. And Councilmember Peterson, I know you've been working with them closely, especially on Seattle City Light and other areas. So we want to thank them for their work and we will continue this in 2022 if this does not pass. Colleagues, let's go ahead. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll on the adoption of AUD 001B 001?
Peterson?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
No.
Herbold?
No.
Juarez?
No.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morales?
No.
Chair Mosqueta?
No.
Three in favor? Five opposed.
Thank you very much. The motion fails and the amendment is not adopted. I understand walk on D is no longer needed. Councilmember Peterson, seeing you nod. Okay, colleagues, that does reach the end of our agenda here. It has been a long day, but I'm hopeful that the extra two hours today gives you the full day tomorrow to enjoy having additional conversations with us and central staff as we finalize the budget. Just kidding. I hope it gives you a day to take some rest and have the opportunity to enjoy time that is outside of budget. Our hope, our sincere hope is that these were the final amendments for today. We will be dealing with only making the final votes on Monday, and we look forward to wrapping up this conversation with you all and really highlighting, as councilmembers throughout today have noted, the common ground, the areas where we have joint investments and the ways in which we're excited and prepared for 2022 to create that more equitable, safe, housed, and healthy Seattle. We do not have any more items on today's agenda, so that means that tomorrow's meeting will be canceled, colleagues. There will be no Select Budget Committee meeting tomorrow, Friday, November 19th. And for members of the public, we want to make sure that you know we extended our committee meeting here today to get really through this so that central staff has a clear directive on what Monday's amendments in total look like. Hearing that, hearing, saying that, Ally, is there anything else you would add for the good of the order in terms of process? She says no. It's, it's 7:00 PM. Colleagues, thank you for all of your work. We'll celebrate all you and all of you and all of your amendments on Monday. With that, if there's no further objections, today's agenda is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.